Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the October 17th, 2023 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one which is under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, I will read the announcement.
Please do.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 20th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation, please see the clerk's staff or assistants or contact the clerk's office at (916) 874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, first of all, I want to say thank you to the clerk for providing us with now water, not in plastic bottles but in cartons. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Would the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, so for your first matters, these are related to public comments that are not on the posted agenda. And we do have public comments. Just let me bring up that.
And we will have up to 30 minutes of public comments, and anything that we do not finish within 30 minutes, we'll take at the end of the meeting.
Okay, our first one is Eric. Eric Kristin?
This is Eric. My name's Eric Kristin. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction, speaking to the supervisors today regarding an issue that you voted on recently where you voted three to two to openly discriminate against the 85% of the construction workforce locally that happens to be union-free. What was difficult during the time, we're listening to the omissions, distortion, and lies that were used by staff, members of the Board, and presenters from Big Labor Special Interest, and I wanted to use some of the time today to address those specifically because they need to be addressed publicly in the campaign that we're unveiling starting today that seeks to educate the public about what the Board did. These are among the things that we will be educating them on. First, the Big Labor Special Interest that spoke, employ not one worker, run not one construction company, which is why you had no union construction companies here speaking in favor of the PLA, you would notice, yet they were here speaking for all construction workers. It's important to note that. But one thing they did say, said the quiet part out loud, "We need a PLA so that we can organize workers." That's all they care about. Not workers' rights, not workers' interests, what's in the best interest of workers, but they want to organize workers. Some of the supervisor's comments were as stunning as they were factually incorrect. Supervisor Serna said the Echo Water Project had a project labor agreement on it, $2 billion project, tenure project, no project labor agreement. Didn't even know what he was talking about in favor of a PLA. That's what he used. Attacking of EMC, which is the entity that conducted the survey, that was then attacked by supervisors Kennedy and Serna. So the survey that you paid to conduct a survey of contractors and how they would engage in a PLA and whether they would or wouldn't, they decided they wouldn't, you attacked that survey. Supervisor Kennedy cited Sutter Hospital as a PLA success story, $390 million project that ended up being over $1 billion and two years behind schedule. PLAs are not common. There are 58 counties in the state, only six have used PLAs. This is something that you're going to learn when these projects go out to bid and these contractors do not bid them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And for the record, Mr. Serna was not inaccurate in his statement in that the general contractor on that project did enter into a PLA. Next.
Kai?
My name is Kai On. My father won't call on was killed by hit M1. Sacramento Police report don't have any information about interviewing my family. I was the one talked to the officer at the scene that I saw my father's glasses on the street, but Sacramento Police didn't interview me about that and is not on any reports. I request to meet with Police Chief Ms. Lester, but I was denied. On August 25th, I went to DA office and Sacramento court to request my father's case file, but I'm not able to get it. Somebody is trying to cover up the truth of my father's death. I appeal all the supervisor cannot into any obstruction of justice and criminal investigation and help me to review my father's court file to prevent any fake information. I went to Sacramento B, KCRW 3, and ABC 10, but they did not provide any help. Yeah, this is my first item. I have second item.
Okay.
You have two minutes total for matters not on the agenda.
I have two items. Different.
You have two minutes for items not on the agenda.
Uh huh.
Yes, so we'll reset the clerk clock at one minute, clerk.
Another one minute?
Yes.
Last year, I went to State Audit Office to report my DME payroll for. The security stopped me. I request to call Sacramento Police Department, but CHP saw up. The CHP dispatch report so part of equalization, call CHP, but not State Audit Office or the building security. I went to law maker, Mr. Jim Cooper's office, and he will deal about it. I went to Elgo Police Department to see Officer Terry Chu. He is my coworker's husband. My coworker know I'm having work for DME since 2014, but control our office, so I was on DME payroll after 2014. I'm appealing, Mr. Hume can forward my email to State Audit Office to report my DME payroll for.
If you could wrap up, that'd be great.
Yeah.
All right. Chair, I'll just say, Mr. On's been in contact with our office. He's a constituent, and we are following through him. We'll continue to work with you, but I think your issues are not a Board of Supervisor level issue, but I'll continue to try and point you in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thelma Adams?
Thank you. My name is Thelma Adams, and I want to speak about the hard work that we do, you know, and the type of work that we are doing, like it's something like keeping foster kid. I used to be a foster parent, like from babies up, and they constantly, you're constantly on the go. You constantly go doing different thing, you know, and there are some that can't do anything for themselves, and there are some that can, and they know that you are there is to help them, and then they, they want you to just do everything, you know what I mean? They can do it, but they know you're there to do it. So that's what they do. They throw stuff around and stuff like that. Well, I understand that, but for the price that they're doing, what they're giving us, it's not, it's not fair, and I think we should have a raise. Yeah, because it's so much I can say, because I'm a long speaking, try to explain everything, but I think we should be, have a raise. And that's all I have to say because I speak too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Charles?
I wanted to say it's worthwhile paying attention to what Elk Grove did by hiring the Gathering Inn to take care of their winter shelter. They're going to be about as successful as you can be with a small shelter. They're probably the best operator in Northern California, so pay attention to what they're doing, what their city numbers look like over the winter, what the crime rates look like. It's going to be a lot better than the small programs in Sacramento City or other parts of the county. So pay attention to that, have your staff pay attention to that. Also, what the city of Sacramento did over the last couple of months with the, they're approving the development all around the 102 acres they bought off of Meadowview is really corrupt, and it needs to be looked into. There's a lot of stuff around that that just doesn't make sense. So pay attention to that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay.
Brian Harris.
Good morning.
Morning.
They got you as chair, Mr. Kennedy, so I hope you're going to be here because you have the lowest attendance rate. Pat Hume, do you feel like giving me an apology for your comments that you said in the last meeting? No, you don't. You're too stubborn to even say apologize to this black man standing before you. I can understand that. Lady of the Court, Attorney of the Court, can you remind him, because Pat Hume wasn't in office last time you said it, but can you remind him that it's not advised for them to reply to us as he did in the last meeting? So he went against counsel's advice, and not only that, he said a pretty rude and ignorant comment. See, Pat Hume, in the last meeting, I was noting how you weren't paying attention and you were on your phone, and actually, I went back and watched it. You proved I was right because you said, "Are your two minutes up?" Can you look to your left or your right? It'll tell you when my two minutes are up, okay? It's that simple. So if you can't pay attention to something that's right in front of you, what else are you not able to pay attention to? So again, would you like to apologize for your rude comment? No, you're still too stubborn? Okay, all right. That's good to know. Maybe you don't need to be reelected. Also, Governor Newsom, wherever you are, if this ever makes it to you, again, I ask you, these are the people you have in charge, people that enjoy their positions too much, give themselves lots of money in raises, and yet can't even pay attention to the public for two minutes without being on their phone, can't apologize to the public, can't really help the public, if you ask me. I believe you signed a bill into effect giving healthcare workers $25 an hour, but yet they don't consider these people healthcare workers. How is that so? If somebody could give me the answers to that, I'd appreciate it, and I'm going to be looking more into you, Mr. Hume.
Mr. Harris, your two minutes are up.
No, it's not. It's two.
Next, 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 next person, please. Next person, please.
Bernadette?
Thank you for having me. I spoke before, but I just thought I'd come up here again and support my union. I'm a caregiver of my child, a nine-year-old daughter. She has a lot of special needs. One thing I thought about when I was here last time when we had the rally, there's a lot of youth here. I urge you to look at the youth, look at the faces, the elders, the faces of most of the people that we care for, our recipients. If you just look at them and see, just the glimpse in their eye, just get a little glimpse of that sparkle in their eye, and just imagine if we were getting a little bit more pay, how much more we could provide for these recipients. And so I want to go on to say some of these statements that we have here. We currently make just $16.50 an hour with only one additional dollar offered from the county for the next three years. I can't even imagine where we would be in the next three years without a raise. 73% of us have difficulty paying rent each month, sometimes always late or being late with the payments. Also, I want to mention, some of us cannot afford healthy vegetables and fruit in our communities, specifically in the southern part of Sacramento, fruit and veggies. We're starting a gardening program for us not to be able to provide healthy food, which has a lot to do with what our children eat and what we put into our bodies has a lot to do with how their thriving can get better. Despite these severe risks, supervisors are saying that they will only offer increased our wages if we sacrifice our health care. Again, we're already eating bad food. If we don't have health care, that's another detrimental to our health. Right now, over 1,000 qualifying caregivers are on a wait list to receive health care benefits because the county underfunds our plan. It is unethical for the Board to propose even further cuts to the plan, putting more providers at risk of not receiving coverage. The Board of Supervisors must act urgently to adequately fund this program and keep seniors and people with disabilities safe at home, specifically our children. I can only speak from a caregiver's perspective of our children. Sacramento County's home care infrastructure is in crisis. More than 2.1 million authorized care hours were not used.
Could you round up?
Thank you. Appreciate you for the reminder. Take care.
Thank you so much for being here. And for the record, for everybody who is here and wants to speak off agenda items, the Board doesn't engage in back and forth during off-agenda items because the Brown Act prohibits us from doing so. So we listen, we're taking it in, but we won't engage back and forth in a conversation. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I just wanted to say that I'm a health care provider, too. I am in-home supportive services for Sacramento County, and a dollar an hour is not very much. I mean, that is sad that we're having to fight for that. I mean, because have you bought gas lately? Have you went grocery shopping? Have you done anything? Our bills are hard, I mean, heavy, just as much as everybody else's, and a dollar doesn't, you know, I don't think you'd be happy with a dollar an hour raise, would you? Any of you? I mean, that's really kind of sad. And the health care, I don't even, I am number 700 on the list and have been for the last three years because the budget does not allow for me to get benefits because you guys don't have enough money to cover it, and that's just not fair, you know? I could be a prisoner and make, get better benefits than I have now, you know? And they pay for things that they shouldn't be paying for, you know? That's not fair. I mean, we work hard, our providers, you know, what would they be without us? They'd be in nursing homes, and who gets taken care of there? Who wants to work in a nursing home because nobody wants to pay there? So that's why they don't, you know? And we give them the dignity to stay in their own homes and take care of them with care and, you know, watch out for their, everything that they do, and that's just not fair. We try hard, I mean, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, please.
Sherilyn?
And who are these for?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've been coming to this meeting, it's the first time I've ever talked, but I've been doing my research on all four of you. And just to sometimes sit in that audience, to watch you guys look at your phones and don't pay attention to the people that are talking, who puts you there. Now, I'm not even a Californian, and I don't want to be anymore. My rent has went up $177 for North Sacramento. I'm a Carmichael. So what's good for the goose is not good for the gander, and I just don't understand that. You stand up here and you pledge allegiance to a flag about just, "I refuse to be homeless in California because of yous." That is not fair. I pay my taxes. I don't even take care of family members. These are not family members that I am taking care of. These are people who choose me. I'm a child psychologist. I've been working with a child in 20 years, but now you, I'm coming to California for a brighter and better place, coming from cold Wisconsin, and y'all want to cripple me. Y'all want to destroy me. Y'all want to take, take, take off my back when I give, give, give to you and them feet. It's not fair. What's good for you, that 36%, 25% is good for me, and I, I might be taking care of yo mama, yo daddy, yo father, who knows? But I know as long as I've been in IHSS, I ain't took not care of one of my own family members that y'all call crooked.
Ms. Dalton, can you wrap up, please?
I'm wrapping up, Kennedy. I want you to look me in my face.
Thank you.
And tell me why I come to California to be destroyed.
Your time is up. Thank you for being here.
$20, baby. Come on down, y'all. $20.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cecil?
What? Oh.
Yeah, they're giving them to individual districts.
Next speaker, please.
So those were all of yours. Cecil?
Good morning. I'm Cecil Ringenberg, District 5. When last I spoke, I was asking about the length of the agenda, saying, "Very difficult for a person such as myself to go through the agenda to see what's really going on." Now the question has come to mind, who puts the information into the agenda? And why I'm curious about this is because I read that events for 2030 are being accelerated, and it causes me to question, where does Sacramento fit in in an acceleration of the UN Agenda 2030? Are we set up to become a 15-minute city? If so, I'd certainly like to know about it. I'd certainly like to have some sort of ability to put my two cents in on the issue, not that I'm more patriotic than the other people in this room, but because my only gift is to read and remember, and I had better pay attention to utilizing the only gift I have if I can add to the community in any way. So my question to the Board is, who generates info for the agenda? Are these government agents, or are these NGOs? And if so, funded by whom, for what purpose? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Brian?
Good morning.
My name is Brian Beverly. I live in the Carmichael area. This is my daughter Ruth Beverly, and then I have a son. His name is Jeremiah Beverly, and I've been with IHSS for over 15 years, and my daughter's very autistic, my son is very autistic. I have my daughter, she can't be unattended at no time. My son, he can't be unattended at no time. Both of them is on medicated medications. They're not in a position to think for themselves, they're not able to deal with no type of money or no responsibility. So I'm here asking for 20 bucks an hour. We asking for 20 bucks an hour due to the situation. I had a job, had to stop working on my job, take care of my kids. I'm a single parent, and I'm just, we're just asking, asking the county to take into consideration that, for the 20 bucks an hour. We really need the help due to bills, due to life. I don't really have a life. It's all about my kids. So I'm just asking the county to be fair and make the best choice.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Beverly. And for the person in the audience who turned these cards into Supervisor Desmond, I will ensure that he gets them. I believe that's the...
That concludes your comments.
Okay, the next item, please.
And for your consent items two through 34, I do not have any notes for you today.
All right, is there any member of the Board that has any questions or would like to pull anything in consent at this time? All right, see, none. Is there any member of the public that would like to address an item? Thank you very much, everybody for being here this morning. We appreciate you coming down.
I do have some public comments. So we have public comments for item two. So maybe Mr. On was talking about this as his second item.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't see him in the room any longer. So if we could have Ms. Debbie.
Debbie Woolley.
Good morning, Board.
Which item are you addressing?
Two through 34.
Okay, you got two minutes.
I don't, I don't want 34 minutes.
Okay.
I know I have two minutes.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank Florence and her team for getting the agenda out by Wednesday, and I really appreciated it. I saw the message come out on my phone, and I was able to go and research it and did my best to understand, and I loved the airport, all the good stuff that's going on there. We're probably not going to talk about that today, but there's 1,000, like 1,000 pages of the Policies and Procedures Manual of the Airport. The agenda item is rich with great information about the county, and I would encourage everyone to read the agenda packet. What I would like to talk about today is our budget for 2024, as I understand it, is $8.8 billion. 800 million comes from taxable income. My curiosity is 85% is coming from other sources. So what I'm, as one of we the people instructing my servants to do is to let us know where that money is coming from. So on agenda item three, six, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, 23, 25, 26, and 27, it amounts to over $14.5 million. I would like the source, the funding source code for all these agenda items to be declared so that we, the people, can know where this money is coming from. And also, thank you so much for running this county, and I know it's a big job, but we need to know, so we can read the agenda, where the money's coming from. So can, since this is a non...
If you can wrap up your comments.
Public comment, was wondering if I could get an answer on that today, or do I have to wait till next time?
What was your precise question?
How can I get the funding codes for these agenda items?
Mr. Villanueva, who should she be in contact with on that?
I'll follow up with her after this, after we do the consent agenda and provide some contact information.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, David.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers?
No, that concludes your speakers for consent matters.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item, number 35.
Item 35 is the Presentation of Resolution Honoring Craig Rader Upon the Occasion of His Retirement From the County of Sacramento.
Good morning, Natasha.
Hi, good morning, members of the Board. I'm Natasha Drain, Deputy Director, Department of General Services. Today, we would like to honor the memory of...
Nice shirt, by the way.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. Very, very, yes, very nice.
Today, we would like to honor the memory of Craig Rader as an exemplary Republican Today, we would like to honor the memory of Craig Rader as an exemplary public servant that dedicated much of his career to Sacramento County and the public procurement profession. Before I continue with some brief comments about Craig, I'd like to recognize Craig's wife Angela and daughter Caitlin, who are here with us this morning. Good morning. I'd also like to recognize Craig's team. You can't miss them. It's the group of folks wearing blue shirts. We're wearing these shirts today in honor of Craig. These shirts were his idea to professionalize the Contracts and Purchasing Services Division, or CAPSD, as we call it, at events that the team attends. It's a testament to the standards that Craig held for himself and the team to exude professionalism. Craig cared deeply about his work, his team, the profession, and being a mentor to others. He always approached his team and others with respect. He served with unwavering commitment, kindness, and care, always making himself available. I'd like to take a moment to share some personal anecdotes and reflections from his team that really show the kind of person, person and manager he was. The first time I spoke to Craig before working with him, I wasn't expecting him to call me back personally, because I'd always assumed he'd had people for that. He spoke to me at length about my question, and he truly made me feel like we were peers. When I came to CAPSD, I felt the same way. I sat with him in his office on my first day, and we discussed everything, from work to life to beer. In my time working with him, he always gave me the feeling that he would drop anything for a question or conversation. I don't know that I've had a manager make such an impact on me in such a short period of time. Craig had the ability to see the potential and good in people. He was a true teacher and a leader in every aspect of the word. Craig genuinely cared about public procurement, and he was a good mix of professionalism and fun. He held himself to a high standard and expected his team to hold themselves to a high standard, too. He was a great advocate for his team's development. Craig always made it a point to check in on our goals and how we could help in any way, or how he could help in any way. And I always appreciated him for it. He mentored and helped me grow throughout my career and passed on a lot of valuable knowledge. I feel very fortunate to have learned directly from him. I've never had a manager like him. I've always felt seen, and my input mattered, and I always felt so appreciated. I remember his absolute dedication to staff's personal and professional growth, his consistency of message and action, and his absolute joy in getting this work correct. Craig was always so genuine in all that he said and did. Craig remembered staff birthdays and always gave us the benefit of the doubt in all that we do. He took the time to teach us when we needed help, but mostly, I remember Craig's smile, his good morning greetings in the office, his incredibly approachable way of being, and the fact that he truly cared about all of us. We knew it and felt it. He's so deeply missed. These anecdotes truly demonstrate Craig's commitment to the county, his profession, and most importantly, the people who were fortunate to have worked with him and for him. Today, as we reflect on Craig's service to the county, let us remember his accomplishments and the values and principles that guided him in his career and life. I hope we are inspired to continue the work that Craig led and to uphold the ideals that he exemplified. And in this moment of reflection, we express our deepest gratitude for Craig's commitment and service to the county and extend our heartfelt condolences to his family, friends, and colleagues, especially Angela, Craig's high school sweetheart, and Caitlin, his May Craig's legacy endure, reminding us that the impact that someone has in our lives can be forever felt. Excuse me. With that, I'd like to invite Angela up to the podium. Okay, we're going to read this resolution. Okay, Angela?
Okay.
All right. Honoring Craig Rader upon the occasion of his retirement from the County of Sacramento. Whereas Craig Rader retired from the County of Sacramento after 29 years of service. And whereas Craig began his career with the county as a buyer in 1994 in the Contracts and Purchasing Services Division of the Department of General Services. And whereas Craig was promoted to purchasing agent in 2005 and continued his contracts and purchasing career overseeing several improvements to county purchasing processes. At the forefront as an early adopter of technological improvements in the industry, providing enhanced value-add to county contracts, reducing risk, and providing savings to the county. And whereas Craig was instrumental in the county's SAP or Compass implementation, contracts and purchasing improvements utilizing Six Sigma techniques, and benchmarking best practices, and emergency operations center purchasing services for many years. Under his leadership, the Contracts and Purchasing Services Division received the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for the past 20 consecutive years. And whereas Craig was loved by customers and his team and was known as a positive and helpful person, his extensive knowledge of contracts and purchasing has left a huge void in the county. And whereas Craig was a leader in public procurement and served in several leadership roles in professional public procurement organizations, Craig was extremely well-respected among his staff, colleagues, and industry. He was the President of the California Association of Public Procurement Officials, or CAPO, and an active member of the National Institute of Government Procurement, or NIGP. Craig loved his position as a purchasing agent with the County of Sacramento and retired early due to his health. And whereas Craig was surrounded by family when he lost his brief courageous with pancreatic cancer on August 12th. Craig was married to his loving wife Angela for over 33 years and was an incredible father to daughter Caitlin and new grandfather, Happa, to one-year-old Elijah Wayne. Craig and Angela were high school sweethearts together for over 42 years. They were devoted to each other. They were each other's best friends. He will be missed by so many. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Sacramento, State of California, does hereby honor Craig Rader upon his exemplary service, his contributions to public procurement, his retirement from the County of Sacramento, and extends its most sincere condolences to his family.
Thank you so much, Natasha. If you guys only indulge me for just a moment, I wanted to...
You, you do not have 2 minutes. You have as much time as you like.
I was going to say, you put the 2 minute up there. It's okay. Thank you so very much to Vice Chair Patrick Kennedy and the other Board of Supervisors with Sacramento County. It is an honor to be here on behalf of my incredible husband, Craig Rader. For nearly 30 years, my husband loved and was passionate about his work within the county and its procurement department. He took enormous pride in his dedicated team, as well as representing the county and doing what he could to contribute to make it a better place for the community at large. He never viewed his job as a job, but rather a calling. For example, mundane things such as procuring masks for the pandemic, he viewed his duty as saving lives. He saw the greater picture and how he could contribute to it. Craig didn't necessarily want to retire when he did. Instead, due to his health and desire to ensure I was cared for financially in the event of his passing, he selflessly did so. John Mustapo and Jeff Gasaway, you were both heroes when I called. Jeff even came to the hospital to pick up Craig's retirement paperwork, to deliver it and ensure it was received by Stephanie Schmidt in SCURS. To Stephanie, thank you isn't enough for your heroic efforts you provided both of us to ensure we understood what was going on and his retirement was effective the very next day. The peace of mind each of you gave to him was so appreciated, and we were and are so grateful. To Natasha, John Mustapo, and the team within the Contracts and Purchasing Services Department, I cannot thank you enough for all the unending kindness, care, and support. The cards, gifts, flowers, and check-ins were phenomenal, and each of you truly held a very special place in Craig's heart. If he had any regrets about his retirement, it was having to leave you all so quickly. Again, thank you to so many other members and employees within the County of Sacramento, including retirees such as Sue Elliott. So many of you took the time to reach out and support Craig, myself, and our daughter Caitlin. It is with a heavy heart to be here today without him, but the overwhelming kindness and response to his passing has not gone unnoticed and inspires Caitlin and I to continue to move forward. Again, thank you to the Board of Supervisors for recognizing my beloved husband and his nearly 30-year record here with the county.
Thank, thank, thank you, Angela. I believe Supervisor Serna would like to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, deepest and sincerest condolences to the family. But it occurs to me that it's times like this that I think give, you know, all 13,000 of us here at the County of Sacramento time to reflect on the fact that this is not just a place to come and work. Certainly, the civil service that is offered by all of us in various capacities is, is appreciated, not just by the board, but of course, by the broader community of Sacramento County. But it's times like this that I think we all realize that we're also a family, and we mourn with you.
Thank you. He very, he very much viewed it as a family, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I couldn't say it better. I will say that I'm really happy that this photo is up here.
I know.
Because every time I saw him, that's what he looked like.
I mean, no matter what, he was smiling.
And so, thank you for being here today.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
David Villanueva. Oh, I'm sorry. David. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. David has, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Say, say, thank you. You know, I've, I've worked with Craig for the last 15 years, and he's been the board's purchasing agent for quite some time, I think a little bit longer than that. And he's always been available. He's, he's devoted, as everybody has said, his life to, to saving the county money and doing purchasing the right way. And many times, we were very frustrated with their purchasing process and the laws that govern the purchasing process, but Craig seemed to always find creative ways for us to get around that. So he's always been a great leader, and he's a fantastic person. And I just want to say thank you to Angela and her family for sharing Craig with Sacramento County. And from all Sacramento County employees, thank you again and best counsel.
And David, did you wink when you said creative?
But within the rules.
He always knew an option.
Yes, we have many options for Craig.
Angela, if it would be okay, I'd like to have the board come down.
I would love that. I would absolutely love that.
Yeah, so we're going to go up here. And then why don't you leave your glasses here?
Okay.
And then I'll...
This isn't how we're supposed to...
Oh, no, right.
We're sure we don't get a choice.
Oh, wait, you can see right here. We don't have to go by the show.
We got Roger.
We got one more.
I know. Oh, I'm just situating.
You think they're right angles, right?
She never takes files that quickly.
We'll do some exercises, smiling exercises.
And then if we can get, we need to take a step over to my left.
Everybody take a step to the right.
Everyone take a step over, yep. And then if you, mom and daughter can switch in between here, so you're in the middle. Yeah, with these two ladies here, there we go.
This is very spontaneous.
Hello, you got 2 minutes.
Scoop right in between the two of yous. There, there, that's great, sweetie. Thank you. One, two, and three. I'm taking a bunch of these. Now I want you to take a deep breath, let it out with a big smile. Okay, I took 100 of those over.
Sorry, just over here, too.
Okay, where are we at? Yeah.
Item 36, please.
Item 36 is the presentation of resolution recognizing the 60th anniversary of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. So this is a great occasion to honor the 60th anniversary of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. It got its beginning in the spark of the heyday of the space race, and obviously, back when Mather Air Force Base, Rancho Cordova was very much a military community. And as all chambers of commerce, it kind of grew organically out of the civic fabric of the community. But they've grown a lot since then, and now they represent not just Rancho Cordova, but also Gold River, Rosemont, Mather, Rancho Marietta, and beyond, totaling a 63-square-mile area, over 400 members, and 11,000 employees, and over 270 business categories. They embody the three Cs: to be the catalyst for business growth, the convener of leaders and influencers who make things happen, and the champion for a stronger community. And I will say that I think that, I'm a little biased, but Rancho Cordova Chamber and the Cordova Community Council are about the best model of, of a civic fabric partnership that really celebrates their own community and puts on fantastic events and things that, that bring out a lot of civic pride. And I think the voters have responded to that by enacting two separate sales tax measures within the Rancho Cordova community in order to, to help build that up. And so I will read just the very end of this resolution here. It says, "Whereas Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce is poised for a bright future focusing on four pillars: growing membership, marketing, civic leadership, and organizational excellence, as it begins the next 60 years, the chamber is committed to continue growing as an essential and valued resource to the business community in Rancho Cordova and surrounding areas, as well as becoming a regional influencer. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, hereby extend its heartfelt congratulations and sincere gratitude to the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce for its unwavering dedication, vision, and commitment to the growth and prosperity of the Rancho Cordova region and the Sacramento region for the last 60 years, and wishes it all the best in the next 60 years to come. And I am certainly looking forward to the gala where we will celebrate such." So if any of you would like to address the podium, or just the...
You're the chair.
Come on in.
As the chair for the 60th anniversary, we've had a number of events, with the big culmination being this week with the gala, where we will have fun and frolic. But in the midst of the fun and frolic, we don't want to overlook the contribution that the Rancho Cordova Chamber has made to the business community. And the fact that it continues to thrive and grow is a tribute to the work that went before and the work that is ahead of us as well. I'm delighted to have served as the chair. Oh, I guess I still am the chair since the party hasn't happened yet. Okay. I am...
Do I get a party?
And continue to serve. What was that?
Do I get a party?
Okay. Your choice, your choice, sir. Anyway, I'm glad to be here, and thank you for the acknowledgement.
I would just say thank you very much for the recognition and echo...
I would just say thank you very much for the recognition and echo Cheryl's sentiments. She's been doing an amazing job. Formal introduction. My name is Joey. I've been the Chair for this year for the Chamber Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I want to say Supervisor Hume wrapped it up very well. As a Lancer myself, I can say that even back in the 80s, the Chamber had a definite positive impact on Cordova High School, more so than most chambers, reaching out into the classroom. And so I appreciate all the great work you've done over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Vice-Chair. I'd forgotten that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Well, not the big seal, but the swoosh. Oh, yes, this is nice. Okay, one, two, and three. Let me change the... There we go. Very nice. Thank you. I'll get these out.
Thank you. Okay, item 37, please.
Okay, for item 37, this is a Presentation of Resolution Recognizing Ambassador Liliana Ferreira for her leadership and dedication as Consul General of Mexico.
Supervisor Serna.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, public, it's my distinct honor this morning to present this resolution from the Board of Supervisors recognizing Ambassador Liliana Ferreira for her leadership and dedication as Consul General of Mexico. And I'm not going to read the "whereas's" in the resolution, but I will impart some of my experience. And I know that others have had a great experience working with Ambassador Ferreira and her staff over the years. And here in Sacramento, I'd like to think we probably have one of the most active consulates for the Mexican diplomatic corps anywhere. Even before the Ambassador was here, we certainly had a long history with her predecessors, doing some great things, not just for Mexican nationals in the 24-county service area of the consulate, but things like Steps to College, which many of us go to each year, seeing hundreds, if not thousands, of students and families at the grounds of the consulate in Natomas, doing what they can to really expand their options for higher education. We saw with great dedication and leadership during the pandemic the fact that our Mexican consulate, under the leadership of Ambassador Ferreira, did a tremendous job of making sure that the public had resources that included getting tested, making sure that if positive, folks, individuals, and families had what they needed to stay safe and keep down the pandemic as best as possible from circulating in our community. It was certainly one of the very valued COGS in a complicated time to make sure that we got through the pandemic. So I really want to stress that element of her service history and that of the consulate. And so with that, it's my, again, my honor to present this resolution. And I would offer the podium to our Ambassador for a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very honored and I'm very humbled to be here today. I just want to say three things. Number one, the consulate, which is one of 52 consulates in the United States, one of 10 in California. We are the largest network of any country in the world, network of consulates hosted in one country alone. And that is explained because of the very large diaspora that Mexico has in the U.S., the most important one in California and Texas. California, 30% of all Mexicans in the U.S. reside here, have chosen California as their home. And Sacramento itself, 25% of its population, if not more, is of Mexican origin. So we're very proud, a great honor and a great privilege to represent Mexico here. We are the only country that is officially represented in the political capital of this wonderful state of California. And let me tell you, in the jurisdiction that I cover, which is the largest jurisdiction of any consulate, we engage with our community of about a million Mexican-born nationals and provide all these incredible services that Phil was just describing thanks to the strategic partnership that we have built with many organizations, but particularly with Sacramento County. And in emergency situations such as the pandemic, we were able to provide all these services, again, not only to Mexicans. The consulate was open to any and all California residents, regardless of their immigration status, regardless of their nationality, to provide tests and to provide vaccines. So we are, we have become a community center to help vulnerable communities, particularly in health and education, thanks to the partnership that we have built with you, Sacramento County. So having said that, Phil said it beautifully a few minutes ago. I am now moving on as a career Foreign Service Officer. I'm being transferred. I will be leaving Sacramento. My last day is October 31st. A new head of mission will be coming onboard. I'm being transferred to Thailand, and my career continues representing Mexico and Mexicans abroad. But I could not be prouder and feeling more honored and privileged to have served Sacramento because we have a long history. I have a long history. My father was posted here 40 years ago. He worked with your father, and so there are family links. I was received here in a very complicated time, six years ago, for Mexican nationals, and welcomed with open arms, and everyone helped me help those that needed us the most. That's the first thing that I want to say. The second thing is, in Phil's words, "family." That is so crucial and so important. I would not be able to do my job the way that I do it without my precious family. My husband is here today, Doug, who is a Sacramento native. So thank you, thank you, Doug, for bringing me back to Sacramento and my two beautiful children who are studying UCLA and UC Berkeley that are also half Californians and half Mexicans, or I should say 100% Californians and 100% Mexicans. So with that, thank you, thank you, thank you. That has been my greatest honor. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Ambassador, I'd like to say on behalf of the South Sacramento community, which Phil and I represent, your impact has been tremendous. Your partnership with La Familia and bringing them within your building and the educational services that Supervisor Serna spoke of, you're going to be a really hard act to follow. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair, I'd ask if the rest of the Board could join the Ambassador and I for a photo? That's it. You gotta be on the other side of the camera.
Let's get a Sacramento Navy.
I'll do yours in just a minute. There we go. Okay, there we go. All right. So if you're gonna do this multiple times, I have another phone here, too. Okay, one, two, and three. Deep breath in. There we go, and take it out. It forces you to smile. One, two, and three. Deep breath in, and a nice smile. Beautiful. Okay.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Okay, for your first time matter, item 38, this is the Child Protective Systems Oversight Committee's 2021 through 22 Annual Report.
Thank you for having us today. We really appreciate it. I'd like to introduce ourselves first. I'm Maynard Johnston. I've been up here before. I'm a retired pediatrician, and I've been on the Oversight Committee's almost since its inception over 25 years ago. And I've been Chair for the last several years. So, Chris.
Morning. My name is Chris Orr. I'm at the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office. I'm a supervising deputy district attorney that oversees our child assault unit since 2014. I also sit on the prevention cabinet and the child death review team, as well as this committee.
Thank you for this opportunity to share about the Oversight Committee's work over these last couple of years and our insights and recommendations that we've come up with. We hope you will find this information helpful as you deliberate the county's policies and investments related to the safety and well-being of our children and their families, who have... And we have a collective responsibility to protect these individuals. The last time that we presented to you was on February the 8th, 2022. The delay is because of COVID and all the other stuff that happened during those couple of years. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge the people that contributed to the development of our report. There's our Oversight Committee members, who selflessly volunteered their time and expertise to gather information to write this report. And a couple of them are here right now. Also, the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services, DCFAS, Director Michelle Cahais and CPS Deputy Director Melissa Lloyd, DCFAS Omsbuns Person Susan Kopp, Sacramento County Prevention Cabinet Co-Chair Stephanie Beigler and Coordinator Jasmine Brosnan. And then Committee Staff Resources, Kelsey Johnson, Deputy County Counsel Carrie Emery Cotner and Abigail Nosie, a couple of which are also here. The committee originated, to remind everyone, in 1968 from the need for child protective systems, not child protective services, but the systems, which is more than CPS oversight, stemming from one severe case of child abuse that was being investigated by the Critical Case Investigation Committee, or the CCIC. The final report issued by the CCIC recommended that an ongoing committee provide oversight of all child protective systems, not just CPS. As a result, by resolution, the Board of Supervisors established a Child Protective Systems Oversight Committee and placed it under the umbrella of the Sacramento County Children's Coalition. The focus of this report was the Oversight Committee's activities from January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2022. Child Protective Systems... Excuse me. Child Protective Services reports and investigations, collaboration between systems serving children, such as the Omsbuns Person, Sacramento County Prevention Cabinet, Child Protective Services. We received and studied the ESCAR system, which will be gone into in a few minutes, Critical Incident Subcommittee Report, and recommendations for continued improvement. Chris?
One way we assess how well children in the child protective system is working is to look at data related to CPS reports and investigations. This table shows the unduplicated number of children who are subject to at least one CPS report, whether it was open for investigation or not. The data reflects the community's understanding of child safety as reports are made primarily by mandated reporters, but also can come from family members, neighbors, or other people in the community. There's a downward trend in 2020 and 2021, which was likely due to the COVID-19 pandemic that resulted in many in-person activities being moved to virtual platforms. Examples include schools changing from in-person to online classroom instruction, as well as medical and mental health providers using telehealth practices to see patients. There's now an upward trend going on in 2022 as children return to in-person instruction and health services. Our committee this year also received presentations, as Dr. Johnston has referred to, from the Omsbuns Men. In an effort to increase this collaboration between systems serving children and become more familiar with the services available, we invited these community organizations charged with ensuring child safety to provide and provide resources or services that contribute to improving the health and well-being of children, to share what they do and how they collaborate with other entities this year. And we heard from the Omsbuns Men, the Sacramento County Prevention Cabinet, CPS, social worker, as it relates to CPS, we received information about social worker recruitment and retention and updates on the centralized placement and services unit. Across the nation, we experienced that... Across the state and nation, child welfare agencies are struggling to retain qualified social workers. Sacramento County is no different. In 2019, the social worker vacancy rate was lower than it had been in several years. However, the vacancy rate has now been increasing since then. And we learned as a committee that the competition for master-level social works is fierce, with many social workers opting to leave public child welfare to work for hospitals, which typically pay more, and schools, which work less. And the pandemic played a huge role in the resignation of social workers in 2021.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt the flow of the presentation, but I was trying to skip forward to see if you're going to answer my question. I didn't see it in the slides. But so you mentioned vacancies, but how does that translate into caseload?
It has an effect on caseload because as more people leave, and I think we document even in the report, the number of vacancies that there are. Forty-four social workers resigned during 2021. 91% occurred within three years of starting their job.
But I guess what I'm asking is, is it a one-for-one kind of relationship? So if we don't have the requisite number of social workers to do what we expect, that means the load gets spread over the balance, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Certainly. And then also, you lose that experience. As you develop more experience, those social workers that are along longer could probably handle bigger loads, but if people get more load, then they start burning out, and we have more people leaving, the social workers, which is a problem for keeping kids safe.
Okay, thank you.
Critical Incident Subcommittee made up of community members with professional experience and Child Services and Protection met regularly during this reporting period. The Subcommittee partners with CPS by participating in the Quality Improvement Committee, or QIC, or QUIC, to review critical incidents of CPS-involved children. So this is an example of us partnering and working with CPS Child Protective Services, and it's gone very, very well, and it's been going on for a number of years now. The goal of these reviews is to determine current systemic issues in Child Protective Services that result in work that is not thoughtful nor is thorough. This year's report summarizes eight full case reviews, five of which were fatalities and three that were near fatalities. It's important to note that the case reviews found that domestic violence, mental health issues, and substance use continue to present in the families involved in fatal and near fatal incidents. Additionally, in almost all cases, one or more of the parents or caregivers has a CPS history or had a CPS history as a child. These risk factors play an important part in accidental and negative outcomes for children in our community. For this reason, we acknowledge the need for continued attention to ensuring that domestic violence, mental health, and substance use disorder resources are available to families in our community. These resources should be considered among the child protective systems in Sacramento County and are crucial in breaking the cycle of abuse. So children that were abused as children tend to become abusers as adults, so we have to break this cycle to prevent that and if we're going to gain any ground in this area. We also provided examples of social worker and supervisor critical thinking errors, which resulted in missed opportunities, such as incorrect determinations, that is, closing cases that maybe shouldn't have been closed, and they were closed incorrectly, using personal frames of reference in decision-making, and closing cases before involving or interviewing all relative collaterals. And relative collaterals are people that have knowledge of the child or the family and also their needs. Examples of relevant collaterals include medical personnel, you know, physicians, nurse practitioners, OB-GYNs, et cetera, school and childcare personnel, Department of Human Assistance for families receiving basic needs resources, community-based organizations serving the families, such as Berth and Beyond, family resource centers, and then also first responders and also law enforcement. Chris will provide a short and a couple hypothetical examples of why it's important to receive the perspective of relevant collaterals and how it led to missed opportunities.
In our report also, we've specifically in this year tried to give you more information about some of the critical instances. So in Appendix B, you'll see actually a summary of each of the critical instances that we reviewed this year. But when Dr. Johnston is talking about having contact with relevant collaterals, we can see that if those opportunities are missed because a social worker doesn't have time or is unable to make contact with or has a caseload that makes it difficult for them to make contact with relevant collaterals, it can have severe consequences. If a parent tells a CPS worker that they are not using drugs, or not using methamphetamine or using some sort of drug, and that parent actually happens to be on probation, CPS could reach out to the probation officer as a collateral and verify if they've been doing testing and whether that information is accurate or not. When you have failures to do that, we leave children in a vulnerable position, because a parent may say one thing, but we have other county resources testing that and not verifying it with CPS. So it's really important for us to try to give CPS the tools to make sure they can contact every relevant collateral. If a mom says she's not allowing contact with the child with the father, maybe there's been an order by CPS that the child should not have contact with the father, it's going to be important for CPS to make contact with other collaterals that may be able to help provide additional information, maybe find out who's dropping the child off to school, maybe see what the neighbors say about whether the father is having contact with the child. These sort of lack of checking with collaterals can have a severe effect on child safety. They obviously take a lot of time, but if the goal is to try to ensure that we're doing everything we can to protect children, you can see that it's going to be extremely important. In our Appendix B, as it relates to one of the cases, you can see that there was a suggestion by CPS that a collateral be contacted, that collateral there was a medical provider. Medical providers, doctors that may have information can provide relevant information to CPS social workers, and we're trying to encourage that in the review of this cases that we've put forward. I will also note that the critical instances that we talk about are examples of cases that involve CPS. That's just a snapshot of the number of kids that are in danger, being abused in this county. The very small number that we have there, ones with CPS contact, there's obviously a larger number than that. The next issue that we're going to be talking about is the ESCAR's system. As you all recall, a number of years back, in February of twenty-twenty-two, we came to you as a board and put forward a plan that the CPS Oversight Committee had been investigating for a number of years. In October of twenty-twenty-one, we had written our report to you indicating that Sacramento needed some sort of updated electronic SCAR reporting system. Prior to that time, when CPS received a report from a mandated reporter of suspected abuse called a SCAR, they would fill out a three-page triplicate form and put it in our office mail to law enforcement, as well as to the district attorney's office. The law enforcement would then receive these huge piles of literally pieces of paper that they'd have to try to sort and try to determine which cases to begin investigating. They would not be able to tell if there are duplicates, if there were repeat entries by other mandated reporters. They would not be able to tell if other jurisdictions had received similar reports. So this was a very outdated system. The CPS Oversight Committee had been working on interviewing all of law enforcement for a number of years and trying to figure out how to improve this system. In February of twenty-twenty-two, we came to the board to say that we needed to improve this system, and we had the good news at that time that we had received a grant from the Office of Emergency Services, and so we weren't asking for funding from you at that time, to get this system here in Sacramento County. We received a six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, two-hundred-thousand dollars each over three years, to get ESCARs in Sacramento County. We began in February, pardon me, in May of twenty-twenty-two, procuring the product that was going to be used, the program that was going to be used, began forming work groups to figure out how we're going to implement this here in Sacramento County. And with the help of the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office, which spearled this effort, and the great efforts of CPS, we got that product deployed out to CPS and the sheriff's office by late January or February of twenty-twenty-three. They did training on it, and by May and early June of twenty-twenty-three, that product went live. So that means now when a mandated reporter or somebody calls the CPS hotline rather than filling out a piece of paper, it goes into an electronic system and is immediately transmitted to law enforcement, and a copy is immediately transmitted to the district attorney's office. And so now law enforcement can take action. The sergeant can review those SCAR reports and say, does this need an immediate call for service? And that's what LA County does. When they, law enforcement receives a SCAR report, they make it a call for service, and someone goes out and has eyes on that child to make sure that everything is okay. So in addition to having CPS be part of that effort to protect the children, we have law enforcement also doing their job as a law kind of mandates through the SCAR system. From there, we've actually now been able to deploy the system to the remaining law enforcement agencies here in Sacramento County. The police department, Sacramento Police Department went live in September, receiving SCARs in electronic form. Folsom also went live, and Galt went live yesterday. Elk Grove went live in September. The only remaining agency we're waiting for that's still receiving paper SCARs is Citrus Heights, and we expect them to be going live with it here within the month. This is saving CPS resources, but really, it's also making a very trackable system. Before, when we tried to get data on how many SCARs law enforcement was receiving, the sergeant of the sheriff's department literally had to count and figure out that he had thirty-five-hundred SCARs by going back and looking at the pieces of paper. Now, with a digital dashboard, the district attorney's office, whose job is to oversee this, is able to pull up, we're able to pull up with a digital dashboard, and we're going to be able to provide data to you in the future. So this is kind of something that's going to have building blocks for the future, because right now, we're trying to get everyone investigating the cases they should be investigating. But one of the sergeants from Elk Grove said to me, he's like, Chris, isn't this going to result in a whole lot more calls for service? And the answer is absolutely it will, because now we're going to be able to say, when a call, when a SCAR was submitted to law enforcement, was it responded to or not? What information did they have? Do they realize that four individuals submitted a SCAR report? A doctor, the teacher, the neighbor, all these individuals saying a child might be in danger. And so there's going to be some accountability that we're going to be able to have and be able to track how we're doing as a community in protecting children. It will, we have another year left in our grant, and so we have all the way through up until April of twenty-twenty-five, so we'll renew the grant for one more year, and we're trying to add some additional components that LA also has, that they've agreed to share with us here in Sacramento. So hopefully, we're going to be able to deploy those extra components of that in the upcoming year. It will, and we'll talk about this in our recommendations, have some resource components that are going to be needing support after the grant is through, but I don't think they'll be substantial.
So now comes the recommendations. First of all, I'd like to thank Chris for all his work on this ESCARs. I can't tell you how much effort he put into all of this and all the meetings that he had with LA and other, there's only a couple other counties, right, Chris, that have an ESCAR system? So we're right there, and actually, we've gone past a couple of the counties, haven't we?
So we had the grant, Yolo County also had the grant, got the grant also. We decided to use the same system that Yolo County was getting in the idea that someplace in the future, maybe we could have cross-reporting and cross-systems so that we would know what's going on with their kids and they know what's going on with our kids because of the so closeness of the border. Yolo County actually has gotten a little bit delayed, so we've actually been able to deploy our system, even though they had about a year or so ahead start, we were able to deploy our system faster than ever.
So we're really proud of this ESCAR system, and it's going to make a huge difference. Anyway, our recommendations, that the Board of Supervisors use their influence to engage the state and find ways the state and county can work together to address the challenges created by the continuum of care reform, such as finding appropriate foster placements and determining where children or youth can legally and safely stay while awaiting placement, given the limitations of congregate care or group home placement. Two is that the Children's Legal Council worked together with the county to find solutions to encourage youth to accept placement when it is available. Three is that CPS develop a strategic plan focusing on recruitment and retention of social workers with the emphasis on retention strategies. And four, that CPS continue developing and implementing strategies to strengthen the supervision process and continue addressing critical thinking errors across the agency. Chris?
Number five, CPS strengthen protocol requiring that all relevant case collaterals are consulted, and all information related to the child, family, and environment have been gathered and considered before cases are closed. Number six, CPS strengthen the practice of consulting with children's medical and mental health providers as part of investigation and safety planning. Seven, all law enforcement agencies continue striving to ensure that all children who described being seriously physically or sexually assaulted are interviewed, and an investigation is done to determine if that case can be proven. Number eight, local cities and counties allocate more detectives for investigation of child abuse-related crimes to ensure thorough investigations of all acts of child abuse, and that caseloads do not exceed the recommended levels of twelve to fourteen cases per investigating officer at one time. The Board of Supervisors provide, number nine, provide continued funding for implementation and maintenance of the ESCAR system. As it relates to number eight, I'll just say that caseloads are on the rise throughout Sacramento. I put this statistic up earlier about the number of reports coming in. Anecdotally, just from the district attorney's office, the caseloads are much higher than they were pre-pandemic, and I don't know if it's a bubble coming through or what's going on, but the agencies are certainly experiencing large numbers of cases have to be investigated, and I think ESCAR is going to add to that, so we'll have more data for you that in the future.
Through the chair. So to that point, as caseloads go up, what has, what has history told us about delays in response also going up?
Sure. Yeah, and I think some of what we're hopefully seeing, hopefully, is children who have been sexually assaulted or physically abused, just didn't, no one had eyes on them during the pandemic. So we may be seeing the bubble when children are back now in the school system can say, hey, you know, a year or two ago, this is what happened to me, and we're getting some of that. I don't know if it explains caseloads that are nearly doubling in size since pre-pandemic, but I do think there's some of that. When we have those delayed disclosures, when we have delayed investigation, it definitely affects the provability of cases, so the longer.
Makes your job more difficult.
Yes. And it affects even just the kid's memory, so it's not unusual for the Safe Center, our forensic interview center here in Sacramento, to be interviewing kids who are, you know, as young as three, we try to get them a little older than three, but four to age thirteen. And you can imagine those very young kids, if something happened three, six, eight months ago, and it takes that long to get an investigation going, it's going to affect the ability of what they have to say. The legislature kindly made a hearsay exception that said that safe interview gets to come into evidence, and they did that because kids remember things fresher right after it happened. And if you wait a year, which is sometimes what it takes for us to get to a jury trial, it's going to be harder for that kid to be able to express what they know. And if we're waiting three, four, five months to get a kid to an interview because we don't have staffing of law enforcement, that's going to have an effect on the provability of the case.
Thank you.
Are you finished with?
And then I'll just note that the board letter that we sent you all lists ten recommendations, but we had sent an updated one, and so you only see nine recommendations here because we narrowed down and combined them into nine, but there's been no substantial changes from what the original letter that has been posted on the board's website.
I want to talk about our work plan in closing and what we have planned for the coming year. We'll continue reviewing CPS cases. We'll be conducting research on CPS social worker recruitment and retention, the factors contributing to the issue and how Sacramento compares to other counties in this regard. Collaborating with the Sacramento County Prevention Cabinet and implementing its child abuse prevention plan to reduce child abuse and neglect related fatalities and near fatalities in our community. Learning about issues surrounding the county CPSU and providing a special report potentially with recommendations, and providing updates on recommendations made in this committee's previous annual report, and beginning discussions with local hospital systems and medical community, and the medical community, and how we might strengthen collaboration with CPS and its community partners. And then in closing, the committee would like to take this opportunity, thank you for allowing us to share our work insights and recommendations, and we also greatly appreciate the county's continued investments in services and programs that specifically address. the county's continued investments in services and programs that specifically address child and family well-being, which significantly and positively impacts child's safety. And also with the board's genuine interest in our community's children and their families. So for all that, we thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other speakers on the dais. Mr. Villanueva, I have a question of you, now, we have one. I have a question of you, Mr. Villanueva. So these recommendations are coming forward, nine or 10. What are we going to do about them?
Supervisor Kennedy, the next item, item number 39, is actually the department's-
Response.
Response to each one of these things.
And so you're going to lay an item each one? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Chair. And that's actually the first thing I'd like to address, is I don't know if there were different versions of this, but the numbering of the recommendations in this item didn't match this PowerPoint and didn't match our response. And so I had made notes just referencing the number of the recommendation that didn't jibe up, so it caused a little bit of confusion, which isn't completely unusual for me, but nonetheless, it did make it difficult to parse through, so I don't, I don't know what happened there. But I would just like to start by saying, thank you and your entire committee for the work that you're doing and for keeping an eye on this, and for really trying to provide tangible recommendations. I will say that so far in my short tenure as a supervisor, the one year that I toured the WET Center and kind of saw firsthand, kind of the environment and just the system and how broken things are. It just really breaks your heart, and so I commend the call for more social workers and more people to get into this space, but, you know, it's just, it really, it takes a special kind of person, because they're answering a call to something higher than themselves. I mean, you know, this is, this is not work that you do because the pay is good or because, you know, you, you want to, it's definitely work to feel like you're making a change. And unfortunately, you know, as you have identified correctly in your report, we are the, the product of our environment, and so we, we learn what we see, and so the cycle will continue to repeat itself. And so when we talk about getting upstream, doing a good job at this level is going to pay future dividends, but it's just a tragic situation. I was looking through the appendix B and seeing these cases that are, you know, fatalities or near fatalities, and so obviously, they rise to the top, but obviously, you know, many of the cases that are not that level are still grievous, and these poor innocent littles deserve a better lot in life. And, you know, and so many cases, it's by ignorance, or in many cases, it's a perpetuation of previous things. In some cases, it's willful negligence, in some cases, they're in the throes of mental health or substance use. But, you know, it just, whatever we can do to improve, and so I appreciate the recommendations, I appreciate the next item, which will be our response and how we're going to look into doing this, but, you know, and some of these are, I think, state legislation issues, because when I, when the whole issue was going on with the WET Center, and it was causing a lot of disruption, that we had to get the children in the care there out so that people could come in for press events and whatever else, and they got great field trips out of the deal, you know, to go to Scandier, to Pizza, or whatever it was. But it was literally acknowledged, like, we can't make life too comfortable for them here, because this is not their home, and we don't want it to be their home, and we're trying to get them into placement. So it's just such a tough situation where, you know, as I said, your heart breaks and you want to do more, and, but the guardrails are up pretty tall as far as what our lane is. So anywhere where we can lean into this and pour into this, I certainly appreciate that, and I'll save the rest of my comments for the next item.
We'll say, I think that's one of the reasons we're deciding to focus on CPSU and do a report, because it's not a simple issue, and it's portrayed sometimes in the media or sometimes in other forms as a very simple issue, but from our backgrounds and speaking with CPS and knowing some of the criminal aspects of this also, that, you know, there's, it's not a simple issue. And so I think that's why we've decided to do a specialized report and focus on that. We thought about trying to add something in-depth for you here, and we decided it wasn't fair to do that that way. The problem's still going to persist, I think, for a while, and so our committee has decided to focus on that and do a specialized report for you all on the issues and the limitations that I think are out there as it relates to that. And then, I want to say one other thing, the extra layer is that Dr. Johnson has been, for a number of years, talking about promoting this interaction with hospitals, and I think that is one of our major focuses in this upcoming year. I think the reason we got ahead with ESCARs so well is that we focused for about three years on interviewing law enforcement and the district attorney's office, our own, looking ourselves in the mirror, from my perspective, and seeing how we were doing and seeing how we could improve, and I think ESCARs will help with that. Those six or so cases, eight or so cases in the appendix are only ones that CPS had involvement in, and so there are lots of child deaths, lots of child physical abuse, lots of abusive head trauma cases in Sacramento that CPS has no involvement in. But hospitals and other care providers and other community resources do have eyes on those children, and part of Dr. Johnson's vision is to actually work with hospitals to figure out what limitations they have, or what can they do to contribute to ensuring a better fabric of protection for the kids in Sacramento. And so broadening that CPS systems outlook, we're inviting those hospitals in as part of Dr. Johnson's project to come talk with us, let us know what limitations they have, let us know what they can do, so that we can provoke, report back to you all about how our major healthcare providers are helping, or not, protect children, and hopefully, we'll be able to convince them that they should be able to do everything they can. So that's, one of the things we're excited about is our upcoming project.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So I know that Melissa's likely to touch on this during the next presentation, and you may be aware that during our final budget hearings, we appropriated $300,000 to initiate the process of exploring an enhanced family-finding element to placement for, for kids. And we looked to LA, who I believe has kind of become a state model in terms of their success rate in terms of family placement. But what I, I guess what I want to say is, it would, I think it would be helpful for the Protective Systems Oversight Committee to have that on your radar, and I certainly don't expect you to have recommendations that reference that this year, but I think as we all move in that direction, and I think we want the same thing, it, I think it would be helpful to have your input as that begins to grow some legs, and, and hopefully, you know, we can be armed with as much data as we can when it comes to trying to avoid replicating the wheel and, and doing what's necessary to look to families first for what I believe in most likelihood is going to be a more successful placement. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. So, no one else? I will say, you know, as Supervisor Hume said, thank you so much for your work. You've come before me, I think, every year I've been here, and, and yourself as well, and the work that you're doing is probably as important as any work that we do here as a county. So thank you so much, and to you and your whole committee. Do we have any public comments?
We do have some public comments by, for two folks. Tezra?
Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Did you part presentation here be good? This be promote, you know, that's right, that's what the place executive director represents labor.
Why don't you come to the microphone, Ted?
And so we would like to save our comments till after the-
At the end?
Presentation.
So, so I'll give you four minutes at the end?
Sure.
Okay.
Or maybe six.
Okay.
Oh, it's not election year for you, right?
Ah, very well.
Okay. Okay, so for our next item 39, this is the response to the Child Protective Systems Oversight Committee 2021-22 Annual Report.
Good morning.
Morning.
Supervisors, Michelle Callejas, Director of Child, Family, and Adult Services, and I just want to say thank you to Dr. Johnson and Mr. Orr for their presentation, and also for the committee's work over the, the past couple of years, over the, well, gosh, I think this is my 13th Oversight Committee report. They have provided so many strong recommendations, recommendations that have led to meaningful change, and to resources that have helped us make improvements along the years. And then I also want to thank you again for the $300,000 dedicated toward family-finding. We will be partnering with Casey, we'll provide you some more information on that moving forward. But now I'd like to introduce Deputy Director Melissa Lloyd, and she will be providing a response to the Oversight Committee.
Good morning to the board. Good morning, Vice Chair Kennedy. I'm Melissa Lloyd, I'm the Deputy Director, I oversee child protective services for Sacramento, and I want to echo Michelle's gratitude to Dr. Johnston and Mr. Orr and the entire Oversight Committee for all that they have done. Today, I'm bringing to you the response to the Oversight Committee's report, and I want to first start by acknowledging our DCFAS workforce in its entirety. There is so much that our specific employees in the Division of CPS do each and every day, but it's strengthened by the overall support that we have with our administration, administrative team as well within DCFAS. And so for today's presentation, one second, I also want to acknowledge our multidisciplinary collaborations, and I'm going to talk a little bit more in depth about that as I move forward. But this year specifically, I mean, we've really overcome a lot from the time of the pandemic, but this year specifically, I think in all of my time in CPS, which I'm going on 23 years, I, specifically in our, in my leadership time, this past year has really demonstrated the, not only the increase of collaboration, but also the importance of the collaboration in order to truly serve all of our kids and families in our community well. And I'm also going to, to share with you my gratitude to the board and to our executive leadership at the county for all of the continuation of the investments of family and child well-being this year as well, because of so many things that we have faced, kind of, in this post-pandemic world that we're not quite yet fully post in. We have had tremendous support from the county exec's office, our deputy county exec, all of the support from you and the community to really look at what we are doing, how we're using our resources, and how we can do more through combining resources. And so really having that support not only helps me in my leadership role, but it trickles down into our boots-on-the-ground staff for them to understand with transparency coming from communication from our leadership about what we are doing, why we are doing it, and the importance of the multidisciplinary collaboration that really does work to enhance helping our families find their strength, helping our families stay together whenever possible, and really helping to meet them where they are, to determine if formal involvement is really necessary. So for the oversight response today, I've broken down my presentation into three themes. Throughout my presentation, I will touch on all of the recommendations that apply to CPS, but they're kind of collaborated into the different themes. With that, I also do want to acknowledge specifically for you, Supervisor Serna, the questions about caseload, and give some data about where we kind of have been and where we are right now in what we are doing well with, but also what we continue to struggle with. And so those three themes are operations in practice, system partners, and workforce development. So starting first with operations in practice, we, in CPS, this is a continual never take your pulse, never take your thumb off your pulse type of focus that we have to strengthen and update our processes. Specifically, you heard from the Oversight Committee about the concern with collaterals. And so a lot of what we do in our day-to-day work is, we're doing a multitude of continuous quality improvement efforts, to where we have a variety of both within each program, and then with our additional supportive programming, really taking a look at what is happening with caseloads, how supervisors are assessing the work that social workers are doing, what we do have available for our social workers to do a thorough job, and what we might be lacking. With that, we're always looking at where, how, how is our training, and how do we strengthen that, and what can we kind of creatively do to help with our social worker population and those within our department that support them to enhance ongoingly their critical thinking that is crucial for every case that we work. And so we do a lot of work with our, a variety of agencies, and those include a lot of outside collateral sources, so our, both a combination of our county departments, public health, probation, DHS, specifically our behavioral health partners. We do a lot of collaboration and bring them in to case staffings as appropriate. We also are continuing to have specialization of social workers to meet unique needs of different populations. So we do have social workers who are assigned to youth who are commercially sexually exploited. We do have LGBTQ specialized workers who help to consult with families, and we still have, and it will stay this way, all of our outstationed social workers with our law enforcement agencies. All of our new emergency response and informal supervision social workers receive training on the importance of information gained from collateral sources. We do refresher trainings, and even more than that, what we're doing, and you'll hear a little, me talk a little bit about this with our supervisor trainings, is we're really focusing in on, along with trainings, how do we meet the individual training needs of each unique social worker? We have a very diverse workforce, but we have people who now, at this time, we have a high population of social workers who were hired during the pandemic. We have some practice drift that occurred during the pandemic, just by virtue of the pandemic. And so a lot of what we focused on is, how do we strengthen our supervision so that the supervision that our social workers are getting is really a complement to the training, and if there is a need for additional specialized training, even if it's for an individual worker or, or a group of workers, we're looking at ways to make that happen, so that we're not just clumping in, we provided a training, so now you should know what to do. We're really trying to individualize our support for our social workers. Additionally, one of the things that is really helping, and this goes to the multidisciplinary collaboration, is behavioral health services filled a position approximately six months ago for a specific mental health liaison. Now, we already work with, and we actually fund, mental health, excuse me, clinicians that behavioral health has who work specifically for CPS, but the mental health liaison that we now have is essentially more of a, I would say, kind of a middle management position who we can call on to help us with a variety of circumstances we may be faced with, with, on an individual level and then an overall level. So what the mental health liaison has helped us with a lot thus far is coming in to help support staffings that are occurring. support staffings that are occurring, help to troubleshoot when we are essentially kind of stuck with a certain matter. This person has helped tremendously with our kids who do have placement insecurity, many of whom you're familiar with because of your time out at the wet center and your awareness of what's going on with our welcome homes. So having that mental health liaison, in addition to the other, excuse me, county and community relationships that we have and connections that we have, we're bringing those people in to help with case consultations and have them come to the table when we're holding child and family team meetings, we're holding multidisciplinary team meetings. And that in itself, by having a person outside of CPS come in in this supportive way, is helping to also increase not only critical thinking, but our accountability to critical thinking. One of the things that this board has heard over time and was a significant issue years ago was our challenges with our policies and procedures, and I'm very happy to share that. Currently at this time, we are doing such a better job with our policies and procedures. We have dedicated executive leadership time on a weekly basis to review our policies and procedures. So where we were really lacking in the past with formalizing our policies and procedures, we've really made great efforts and strengthened our policy and procedure work. And we're working in tandem as we're working on policies. Our system now has, has been set up so that while we're working on a policy and procedure, we have our workforce development team who is right there with the staff that work on the policies and procedures to start creating the trainings and really, so this really provides the opportunity for us to not have a policy kind of sit and not have a plan for training. And that, over the last couple of years, has really been strengthened, and we've seen some pretty good outcomes from that as well.
If I can interrupt just real quickly. You spoke of the mental health liaison, and I think that's fantastic. I hope that, there's a couple of areas that I hope that that individual or area will be working with, and that's the Sacramento County Office of Education and the county have a strong partnership in putting, placing mental health clinicians on campuses of schools. And I hope that, you know, we're not siloed and we're talking, and another one is, I'm sorry, but another one is the, we also have the Sacramento County Youth Advisory Board on Mental Health. That's not what it's called, but you get the point.
I do.
And I hope that, you know, you're liaising with them as well.
Absolutely, and thank you for that, Supervisor Kennedy. Actually, Sac County Office of Education was a little bit further in my presentation, but I will go ahead and share that the mental health liaison-
You don't present here a lot. You're not used to getting as interrupted as you're about to.
It's okay, it's okay. I get interrupted in my day pretty frequently, so I'm used to it. It's totally fine. And I welcome any questions. So the mental health liaison that we have, what is really amazing about her role is that she is actually part of those, she's part of the work with SCOWI. She works hand-in-hand with Chris Williams, who I believe many of you know with SCOWI, on all of their efforts to create schools as centers of wellness. And so she is on a lot of their meetings, and she is essentially ensuring that CPS is aware, we have key people who are also working with those entities, but she, it's like an added layer so that she, with her lens on CPS, she can also take information back to those groups and share and help make those connections. So she is extremely involved with the efforts by SCOWI.
Good, thank you.
Additionally, and I think this is where I left off, I'm sorry. We continue to focus on our supervisor-to-social worker ratios, and that's really important. And we've mentioned this in past Oversight reports, but we, at one point in CPS, we had ratios that really just made it untenable for a supervisor to be able to effectively supervise, you know, seven, eight people at a time, but that also impacted a social worker's ability to get the right type of supervision and support. And so we continue to work toward, we have about half of our, half of our overall division at a five-to-one ratio. And that is really helping so that supervisors and social workers essentially have more time. They're not as rushed. We've also incorporated, you've heard a little bit in the past about child and family team meetings, but I also want to emphasize that we also, as a department, made the decision to incorporate prevention child and family team meetings. And child and family team meetings are required under continuum of care reform, but we decided that that practice will benefit families doing that upfront. So there's not necessarily funding for the prevention and child family team meetings, but we utilize our resources to hold those meetings. And the benefit of that is that every child and family team meeting allows for family members and whoever the family, child, or youth sees as their support, it allows for those people to come to the table. And by holding these meetings and really allowing the family to be at the table, you're able to understand more about what is really going on with that family. I do not ever believe in any of our lifetimes, the stigma or the worry that child welfare poses to a family just by existence, being a government agency, is ever going to go away for families. But being able to invite families in, to have their voice at the table, is making a huge difference. And that's one of the reasons, one of the practices that has helped us reduce the overall number of kids in care over time is really meeting families upfront and including them and listening to them and educating them and letting them educate us as well. And so by doing that, you can do, you can create stronger plans for families. And so part of that also, I'm tying this back to critical thinking, is that that also allows for the social worker to have more information and be able to understand a little bit more about what a family is challenged with and what could possibly help them and what they see as what could help them. Because a big part of what helps critical thinking also is to constantly be addressing bias. And so we do have, and we've shared with this board before, but we require implicit bias training for all of our staff. Having that training has really gone a long way to be able, quite frankly, to even have the conversation around bias. For a lot of people, that can be a very uncomfortable conversation, but having that training and creating a learning environment within our agency is really helping for us to talk about, you know, how, what the challenges are when working with kids and families and maybe what some of those worries are that don't always come out. All of this together comes back to helping with critical thinking. Another way that we are utilizing internal partnership is with the Department of Personnel Services. I talked a little bit earlier about the training and really looking at trainings, but when we start seeing maybe themes within practice, we will talk with and look at what our Department of Personnel Services has that may help enhance the work that our staff are doing. And this isn't just at the social worker level, but our, our staff across our agency. And so that's another collaboration that we've delved into a little bit deeper. A lot of times when you think Department of Personnel Services, at least kind of from a worker supervisor program manager lens, you're thinking, you're kind of thinking discipline. You're going to that avenue. But the Department of Personnel Services, as we've intentionally engaged with them in a, in a more proactive way, we're learning from them what types of services and supports they can offer to help support our workforce. And that's been really refreshing around learning about what they can also come forward with, with, if a training doesn't necessarily exist in the county, but something they may recommend. And that really comes by us talking openly about the themes that we're seeing within So I will move forward to system partners, and I've talked a little bit about system partners already, but specifically what you heard was the recommendation for this board to work with state agencies and higher around the issues with continuum of care reform. And so one of the things that I wanted to start out with saying is that we do, and we have talked before about the challenges that have been brought on by the good intention of what the continuum of care reform was created for. And that essentially kind of left our kids, really our most vulnerable kids, with placement insecurity that was not intended. And so one of the things I wanted to share a little bit about what both myself and Michelle does at our level with our state partners and talk a little bit about what we do with our local partners as well. So specifically working with the Department, California Department of Social Services, both Michelle and I are in routine contact with leadership there to share what the challenges are, what we're doing, how we're trying to creatively innovate practices and services for our kids. And one of the things that I think is really important is that we share very openly what those challenges are, and we, we hold ourselves accountable, but we also have expectation that the state has accountability as well. And one of the things that we've seen over time, especially during this last year, is that as we share information, again, very transparently about how we are trying to meet the needs of our kids, the state kind of concurrent to that is, I think, now really hearing from a lot of counties what the challenges are, and they're looking at and have enhanced different forms of funding to be able to create different opportunities for true, I would say, appropriate placement for our kids. In Sacramento County, to give you a little bit of data, we have about 1,200 kids in care. We're at that point right now, which is really good. We've had, we've had a tremendous decrease. We do not have challenges when younger kids come into care. And I will also say that we are filing petitions, meaning we're bringing the need for juvenile court intervention. That has reduced over time because of all our, of our upfront services that we're providing. We're filing on about 35, average this year is about 35 kids a month. And that's a lower, lower number than in most years, I think, all years past since I've been with CPS. The reason that we're seeing, well, we're seeing that lower number because of those upfront services, but when we do bring kids into care, the kids typically 12, 12-years-old and younger, if they need to move into out-of-home care, we are not having a struggle with finding placements for them. Overall in Sacramento County, out of our entire population, we have about 15 to 20 kids on any given day who are placement insecure, and these are the kids that are out at our welcome homes. So 15 to 20 kids. And what we're, what we're doing is we're definitely staying in touch with the state, and they, they know which kids we have there, and they're aware of our efforts. We're holding technical assistance calls with the state, and that is really, transparently, that started out a bit rocky, but that has really moved to a very collaborative type of relationship with the state where now they are coming up to really meet us where we are in regard to creative solutions. And so with these 15 to 20 kids, and again, our county is not alone in this, a lot of what's being looked at from the state level, and then I'll go into what we're doing locally, is they're looking at, I talked about the different funding opportunities. So they're looking at how to support rates that are paid to providers that can really truly meet the needs of kids. These 15 to 20 kids, most of them, not all, but most of them need a congregate level of care, so like in a facility, but what, but what we don't have in the state is enough resources for that. And not all kids thrive in a milieu, a placement where there's six kids at a time or more. And so one of the examples of how the state is working with the counties is they're looking at and doing and supporting innovative models of care. So for some of our kids, that helps us create a placement where there are maybe two kids to one care provider. The rate for that is higher, but those types of placements for some of our kids, because each of them have their unique needs, can offer the mental health supports and other supports that sometimes are lacking with no ill intention in some of those congregate levels of support. Additionally, what we're doing locally here is we are expanding our placement capacity. And so we're working with, right now, about six to seven local partners to increase placement capacity for intensive services foster care. So this is home-based setting care for kids, those kids that don't necessarily need to go to a congregate level of care, but they won't fare well necessarily, nor do we have the caretakers available in what most of the general public knows as a foster home. So there's intensive services, foster care settings. We're doing a lot of work to work with different foster family agency partners to increase those types of placements.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. And I apologize for the interruption, but I just want to make sure I'm tracking with you here. And so what I'm hearing you say is that the younger kids who come into care are generally easier to place. And I would assume, and this is where I'm looking for correction if I'm wrong, I would assume that's because maybe the older kids are starting to display a little more independence and maybe desirous of more autonomy and control over their lives, whereas the younger kids maybe are still a little more receptive and acquiescent to being, I hate to use it this way, but being told what to do.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so then my second question is, and this kind of goes back to the comments that I made earlier, you know, I think that the Foster, Foster Youth Bill of Rights, while well-intentioned, because it's obviously looking to support and buttress those kids who are desirous of that autonomy and having some control over a pretty bad situation for them, the way it manifests itself, though, it really encourages that rebellion and that you can't tell me what to do and I'm not going to go where you want me to go. And so is there an opportunity, you mentioned funding, is there an opportunity to also look at a sort of different level of placement that is not a welcome home where we're just really trying to, this is a landing spot until we can find you something else, but is not a necessarily traditional foster home, but is something more akin to, not an institution per se, but, but a congregate living environment that's, that's almost more to when they're going to be an independent adult, how they might live then?
We actually are. So what you're describing, there's so many different types of placements, and one of the things I'll just say really, really quickly is that it's really nice that we're in a place today, despite all of the challenges, that we really are collectively as child-serving systems, both at the state and county level, looking at creative, creative types of placements that really can meet children where they need as to meet them. And so one of the specific, as you were speaking, what I want to bring up is there are transitional housing programs for minors, and the acronym for that is THPM, THP minor. You'll hear that kind of wording. And so there are very few and far between of THP, of providers willing to provide that type of service. We have a fair amount of transitional housing program opportunities for our kids in extended foster care who are 18 to 21, those 18 to 21-year-olds. But where we're lacking as an overall system is with THP minor placements. And so kind of the, the, there are other placements that can help the kids that you just described, but this is one area where we know across the state, and I will say across the nation- but this is one area where we know across the state, and I will say across the nation, there is a lack. And these are for those teens who are kind of, you know, 16 closer to 17, 17 closer to 18, who do have independence, who, some of them are working a part-time job. We have a young lady right now at one of our welcome homes who is holding a part-time job, going to school. So these kids who just are not demonstrating the ability through no fault of their own, right? These kids have experienced tremendous trauma. But kids who are demonstrating the ability to be a bit more independent, but because they're not yet 18, that kind of traditional home-based setting or that congregate setting doesn't really work for them because they have a challenge with maybe following all the rules. They don't fully understand why the rules fully apply to them. And there's licensing requirements where if we can be a little bit more creative with meeting our kids where they are, like, could they possibly bend a little bit? But you have all this regulation that goes on. And to that point, our probation partners, Chief Yarber and Julie Weary, myself and some folks from my team, just met with a provider to talk with them about the need for a THP minor, you know, for them to come into our county. So we held that meeting about two weeks ago, and they were really looking at doing THP. But, you know, a big part of my job also is advocacy, and so I really just kind of said, this is really where the need is, and just talked to them and shared some data with them. And it was a great meeting that we held in partnership with our probation partners. And we still, you know, need to see if that will come to fruition, but we're putting the word out to different providers about the need for increasing THP minor programs. But there's different reasons that providers aren't as inclined. There's, you know, overall, just concerns when you're caring for a minor with some complex care needs and that level of that independence. I think that as a system, that's a placement opportunity that I think some of our providers just find a bit more challenging. But we continue, not only myself, but my colleagues across the state, we continue to really advocate for that and see if we can kind of, you know, bring together everyone to talk about kind of what would it take? How can the county support these providers so we can move the needle on that? But in addition to that, the capacity expansion work that we're doing is really opening up, and you, let me preface, let me say this. There's the work being done to expand capacity, but then there's also the work directly with the child that needs to take place as far as helping them with whatever the mental health challenges may be, whatever those substance use issues may be, helping to address if they are being actively exploited. So there's kind of like, we can build this capacity expansion, which we're making, we're making great strides toward that. And we've had, I think today we have five kids in what we have created in those homes. But we have to also do the continuous work to help kids feel safe enough to accept those placements, help kids understand that they do have a voice, and help kids understand that there are opportunities for them. Because for a lot of these kids, it's kind of fight or flight for them. So all of that work continues. In addition to the work that I'm doing also, Michelle routinely meets with members of County Welfare Directors Association at their leadership level, as well as Director Johnson from the California Department of Social Services, to further discuss the needs for these kids. Additionally, one, the oversight, Dr. Johnson and Chris Orr reported out, you know, a recommendation that we work with our Children's Council. And I can very proudly say that we work very closely with our Child's Council Office here locally in Sacramento. We're routinely talking with them. Their staff are out visiting our kids. They have their staff attorneys, of course, but they also have caseworkers and advocates that they have on their team. And their team works very closely with the kids who are in care and works very closely with our staff as we work through, especially the kids that are most affected by continuum of care reform and having placement insecurity. Along with that, and that's Children's Law Center is CLC, but them, along with our county council partners, we're routinely collaborating on a variety of levels and for a variety of reasons. So I really do appreciate our work together on the children that we mutually serve. Additionally, I routinely meet with our presiding judge, along with our county council, to make sure that we are, she is understanding some of the challenges and successes that we're having within CPS. She welcomes the meetings and oftentimes, you know, is the one asking for them. So that relationship is strong, and I really appreciate the interest of our presiding judge of the juvenile court to really, she has a genuine interest in what we are doing, how things are going, what the efforts are producing, and is right along there when we have celebrations to talk about, and also very understanding when we very openly talk about what the challenges So, moving on to number three, the continued implementation of the E-Scar system. I think Mr. Orr gave a really good overview of that. I can share that our team at our hotline and our emergency response team is very happy about E-Scars. We're very grateful for the support of E-Scars. Again, I think he gave a great overview of how that really is enhancing the work that our law enforcement partners can do, and it's really good to hear. We only have one more agency to go on that. So now I'll move over to workforce development. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our retention and recruitment strategies and our ongoing efforts to strengthen supervision and address critical thinking errors across the agency. So I'll bring a few more things up about that. So as far as recruitment, we, our workforce development unit in DCFAS is very strong. We continue to hold virtual mass hiring events. We have our MOU with CSU Sacramento, and that really is the university here locally where we get most of our graduates. One of the things that I'm really pleased that we made a decision to do, and this was starting a couple of years ago, probably about three years ago. So with any college or university, you have to have an MOU to be able to have what's called like a field agreement, to have interns. So I'm going to talk a little bit about interns, because in order to have good graduates from the School of Social Work, there's an important, you have to invest in the internship opportunities. And as an agency, we are very highly invested and have been for several years. I myself am a graduate of the 4E program at Sac State. That program is strong and continues to get stronger. One of the things, though, that really started to surface since the pandemic was more of our staff, let me give a little reminder, we hire for social workers, we hire both at the bachelor level and the master's level. So we have seen an increase of staff wanting to do online school for their MSW. So it's kind of half and half. We have some of our bachelor-level staff who will go to the part-time program at Sac State, but then the others who are involved in a master's-level program are going through online school. And years ago, we did not allow our staff, I don't know why, when you know better, you do better, but whatever the reason was, we did not necessarily support, and it wasn't as common for our staff who were going to online school. With the online MSW program, you still have a field component, so you have to do an internship. We weren't supporting that, and it was really hurting us in a way because we had lost some staff, not a lot, but some, who said, I'm going to go to an employer who can help support me while I'm going through my online education. So we've increased the number of MOUs that we do with accredited schools of social work. So that is something that has really helped, because the three-year part-time program isn't necessarily the right fit for some of our staff. They find, maybe because of their family composition or what they have going on, going through a online school, just like anybody in society, you know, that may be a better fit for them. So we've increased those MOUs, as long as it's an accredited school of social work. And with that, we have, we're doing pretty well. We're at an 11.4% vacancy rate of social workers right now. Overall, where we, we've seen, and this is to Supervisor Serna's question about caseload, we have seen a decrease over time in our permanency caseloads. So those are the caseloads where we have open court cases. Last year, we were averaging 17. This year, we're averaging 14. For emergency response social workers, although we have increased positions in that area, thank you very much, we are still seeing an average referral right now, we're at, for 2023, we are at 15, and when I say referral, that means investigations, we're at 15 investigations per month. Last year, we averaged 16, and the year before that, we had, no, last year, we averaged 15, and then in 2021, we averaged 16. That area of our division, emergency response, is one that we seem to not be able to get ahead of despite having additional resources. We are continuously doing additional training and support, and that's the one area of our division where I was really focused on getting that supervisor ratio down to five to one. In emergency response, and I know you've heard Michelle report out on this before, we really want, should have, for the benefit of our staff and the benefit of our families, an average of 12 or fewer investigations. I will say, as someone who did that specific work, we would fare better if we were at eight to 10 in order to do really good investigation, really make sure that we are really addressing a family's needs, because the more that we can engage, the more that we're able to prevent formal intervention. So this is an area that we're continuously working on in our agency to get that caseload down. There are definitely years in the past where it was much higher, but that is just, very openly, I'm sharing, that is an area in our agency where we are, we're really working at getting that down to at least 12. And we've got phenomenal staff. We've got phenomenal staff. It's, as you know, it is challenging work, and we're really trying, I'm going to go back to some of my first comments, really trying-
Don't go back, don't go back too far.
And I'm sorry, Melissa, I'm sorry to interrupt. I know we only scheduled 15 minutes for this presentation, so great information, but I wonder if we can-
We can. And this is one of my things I'm working on.
Thank you.
I get so passionate about the work, so thank you.
And we appreciate the passion.
But I will just say, we are working on continuously how we can get that caseload average down for our emergency response workers. And then, we have shared before about our supervisor cohort. I'm very excited to share with you, we started our first cohort for supervisors. We never had this in the past. It started September of '22. We had 37 graduates. March of 2023, this year, we had 37 graduates of that program, and we're starting our second year in March of 2024 of that opportunity. And that's really affording not only social work supervisors, but all of our supervisors in CPS, the opportunity to have specific training for some, what you might call some basic rudimentary type of supervisory skill enhancement, but also bringing in others to, other trainers to help supervisors learn how to engage with their staff and work with their staff more effectively. I will move forward to continued efforts. So just for our improved outcomes, I wanted to share a little bit about, and I will do this very quickly, we are seeing an upward trend of our reunification rates, and we are seeing, we're very happy about seeing a decrease in our reentry rates. We still need to work on that. And reentry is when a child's been in care and within a year, they come back into care. We're also seeing a decrease in the number of placement moves for kids, and this is really important because the fewer moves typically results in better outcomes for kids because they have more stabilization. We continue to work with our birth and beyond, FRC partners, our Community Incubator League partners, the Sacramento County Prevention Cabinet. Essentially, over this past year and a half to two years, the one thing that I will say about multi-agency collaboration is the Child and Family System of Care focus through Assembly Bill 2083, where it's brought, this essentially brought all system partners together in a formal way. That work, coupled with the work of our prevention cabinet, has really helped to lay such a great foundation of everyone coming together to better serve children and families in our community. Because as was stated with the Oversight Committee, these are all of our kids and families, and we all have things within our systems that we can do to really help prevent child abuse and neglect and address things more upfront before the circumstances for kids and families become worse, and there is a formal need for CPS involvement. I think I will pause there, as I know I'm at time, and see if there are questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? I see Supervisor Hume.
I know, I can hear the disappointment in your voice, but I won't go long. I just want to say just a couple of quick things. One, I would hope that as we interact with some of the older kids that are brought into care, that we look at that as a potential recruitment effort, because they have two choices in life. They can either repeat behaviors, or they can be a part of the solution for future generations. So I think that's kind of a ready-made. And then the second thing is, I read in the response that you look at SOP mapping, standard operating procedure mapping, after these incidents, like what gaps did we miss? What could we have done better? And then you said, when you know better, you do better. And I think that's just such a critical thing to apply here, because, you know, making mistakes is predictable, but, you know, not learning from them is avoidable. And so, I think that's important. And then the last thing is, I took a moment and looked up THPM, and it's disappointing to see that it's not federally or state-recognized for reimbursement as appropriate foster care. So just one more hurdle where I think we're offloaded onto our local funding sources. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions, comments? Do we have any public comment?
We do. We made special arrangements for-
Thank you very much.
So we have Tezra and then Ted.
Is Tezra here?
Is Tezra here?
She's here. My staff.
Go ahead, you're here. And in anticipation of 2026, I'm going to give you six minutes, Ted.
This is why, this is why I always call you first. Ted Samara, Executive Director of United Public Employees. We represent the social workers, the child development specialists, and the FSWs over in CPS or DCFAS. And first, I want to just recognize and appreciate the work that this committee has done in regards to trying to curb child neglect, child abuse. I think it's very applicable in what they do do. But as you know, my job is to represent the social workers. And one thing that I believe is in oversight is the safety of those social workers, especially in CPSU in those welcoming homes. I had the privilege to go out with my business agent to observe the working conditions at one of the homes of Alder Creek Road, just as a result of hearing from our social workers in regards to the abuses that they have to intake on an everyday basis, from not able to confiscate alcohol or drugs that they just so blatantly drink and smoke in the houses, the verbal abuse they receive. they just so blatantly drink and smoke in the houses, the verbal abuse they receive on a daily basis in these welcoming homes, as well as the physical abuse. You know, I heard Ms. Lloyd speak about, you know, what, five kids in a house. Well, there was five kids in the house when I went in the middle afternoon, because these children were not at school, not coupled with the three that were at school. The, the language these children were using towards the social workers and the demands that they were giving to them, well, we wouldn't even let our own children talk that way. But they have to take it. They have to endure it. So who would want to come work here if knowing that their first place they're going to come is to these welcoming homes? You know, we talked with the department about the safety, the protocol. We were told they were going to get dedicated sheriffs if they entered to a contract, which came to be, I guess, not true, maybe just a bunch of lip service we got at the table when meeting with them about the conditions of these welcoming homes. We had a social worker that has asthmatic problems address this with her supervisor. It was, the response was reminding that social worker she's still on probation. Is that the support? Is that the training that they're doing in this cohort? They have to provide the resources to the social workers to do their jobs. They call them engagement social workers at these welcoming homes. There's no engagement going on there. They're being hired under false pretense that they're going to be doing something good for these children by providing the tools from the department so that they can assist these children. They're not given those tools. The house I went to and talking with the two social workers that were on probation that say they needed their job, one came from DHA as a result of being a hiss for X amount of years, they can promote into a social worker position. So don't believe they received the adequate training as an engagement social worker. So what are we doing here? At least at the wet center, I know those were not the best conditions for these children to be at, but you had an on-person sheriff officer there. You had magnetometers there. There's still the threat over in the boys' home. I mean, they ruined that house out there. And I understand, these are troubled children, and I don't want to sound unsympathetic to what got them there in the first place, but something has to give from you all here from the department and protecting the workers out there. They shouldn't have to come to work knowing that the first thing I'm going to hear is some foul language about how I'm not doing my job from these children. What is going to give? You know, I know, and she's, Tezra, my business agent is assigned over to CPS, can give you more an account of, because she talks to them on a daily basis, of what they go through. But there's no support. The last time, like I said, at the Elder Creek House, when I'm talking to those social workers that were on probation, they can't recall the last time they seen a supervisor out there. Is that the support? Is that the support they're speaking on? I know, they all say, well, we're going to meet with, we're going to meet with UPE this afternoon to talk about the welcoming homes, but it's just a meeting about a bunch of ideas. What tools are they, they need to provide them trainings on how to protect themselves, the social workers, the CDSs, the FSWs. They're overworked. They're doing overtime. I have FSWs that, they're working 60 hours a week, and that's just transporting kids from place to place. And so to recruit and to retain them, you have to give them the tools to do their job. And the number one is support and training on how to defend themselves. I had a social worker that left on crutches because they were playing a tug-of-war, trying to get some alcohol or drugs from a, a child. I had another social worker that got punched in the face because they were trying to take one of those lasers from them that they were shining in other kids' and staff's eyes. These kids know that under the Foster Care Reform Act, that you can't take my stuff. So screw you, social worker. We're going to drink, we're going to smoke, we're going to do what we want to do. And it's at night where a lot of this occurs because they leave and they come back. They'll hide their weapons, they'll hide their drugs, they'll hide their alcohol outside. Some are brazen enough to bring it inside. You know, they'll listen to the social worker, just go smoke it outside, please don't smoke it in here. But this is negate the fact that they'll come in there and they're angry, they're mad, they're mad at the system, they're mad at the world, and probably have every right to do so and be mad. So please, I, I, I hope this does not fall on deaf ears. And I appreciate the good doctor saying that they're going to look at CPSU, but they should have been looking at CPS a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. That would be two minutes.
Don't worry. Good afternoon, I'm Tezra Sledge, I'm the business agent for UPE. Worked with Ted, and I have DCFAS almost as a whole, but definitely I have the whole of CPS. And in speaking with the different employees that do work out at these welcoming houses, as Ted has stated, the conditions there as far as working conditions are not good whatsoever. They are being told when the youth is upset, if they cannot talk them down, that they are to hide and lock themselves inside of an office, a converted bedroom, which is converted into an office, and they're to stay in there and to contact law enforcement and stay in there until law enforcement comes, which could be hours, depending on what the situation is. Law enforcement may say, oh, well, we can't just send one deputy, we need to send more than one. So you have to wait until there is more than one deputy available to get out there, which again, could be hours. And by the time the deputy gets there, the youth has smoked whatever substance or drank whatever substance they have brought into that house. There has been an instance where in one of the homes, I believe it was in one of the Fair Oaks homes, where there were two youth outside fighting, and one of the youth was stomping the head of another youth. And law enforcement took hours to get there. And when they did get there, they did nothing. There was another, there's a incident of one of our social workers that did contact law enforcement because she wanted to make a report with them. They told her, no, we will not make a report on your incident. So to have a contract with the sheriff's department, and I wish they were here, as being a partner, it's not working, right? If I call law enforcement and we have the line security, they observe and report, that's it, that's all, they don't get involved. These social workers, the CDSs, the FSWs, I know I'm over my time, but they have no way of defending themselves. They have no training of self-defense training. They're out there flailing and failing the children, as well as the department is failing their employees, which are our members.
Thank you, Tezra. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Michelle, I don't know if you can come down to the podium. In terms of the safety of, the safety issues that have just been brought to our attention, can you give us a brief explanation of what different levels of precaution are taken when there's, especially when there's known history of violence, or there's known history of having to be escorted, you know, by law enforcement? How, in other words, how, how do we use whatever assessment we can to ensure the safety when we put our social workers out in the field in a questionable situation in terms of their safety?
So first of all, thank you, Ted and Tezra, for bringing up the concerns. We share the concerns about our staff's safety. We have hired a consultant to help provide guidance for our social workers with respect to de-escalating situations. We are also meeting with him again tomorrow to provide some self-defense training. We work with probation, some of these kids are also on probation. And to Ted's, or Tezra's point, we, we do have the contract with sheriffs, so they do roving of our three welcome homes right now, but they do have to call backup before they take action. So we are very aware of all the situations that, that happen. I'm not aware of one of our social workers getting punched in the face, so I will follow up on that, but that never was elevated. And Deputy Director Lloyd is great about elevating, as is our management team, specific issues. So we are continuing to work on it. It is a challenging situation. As, as you mentioned, our kids have foster youth rights. One of our requests of Director Johnson at the Department of Social Services is that they at least consider a balance between foster youth rights and our obligation, having these kids in our care and custody, to be a prudent parent. We aren't able to take certain actions. My staff do say, please go outside and smoke, just not in the house. We, we're not going to get into a tug-of-war over drugs. We call probation, we call law enforcement, and it's, it's a difficult situation for sure.
Are there any instances that where preemptively the law enforcement deputy or deputies might join a social worker on a, on a field call?
Not preemptively unless we are going to take a child into protective custody.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, in which case, that is the kind of the normal standard operating procedure?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
Michelle, when we visited the wet center, I remember the conversation you mentioned, you know, in some cases, these young people don't, they want, do not, they're hesitant to be placed somewhere. They have a relationship with your staff, and they have a trust relationship there that in theory, they could be trying to create problems so they can just go back home to where they really want to be, which is with the, the situation that they're accustomed to. And, and also, you mentioned in these homes, there's separate, you're separating them out. The question I have, can there be some groups of kids that are, are worse together? So do, or do you work in these homes the way we work in our shelters? If someone's creating a problem, we remove them from, we replace them somewhere else? And the other question is, when they go to this, this home, welcome home place, is there still a connection with the staff that they trust and love, or I don't know if you can, trust, I think, or they have a relationship with, they're connected in some way, to kind of ease them into it so they're not just put into a cold situation, there's still a connection there, working with them? Or are they, do they just go there and whoever the social worker is that day is the one they're seeing? I guess I'm, I'm asking about continuity of care in regard to these relationships.
Yeah, both great questions. So the first one, when there are sometimes kids that just bounce off each other in a not positive way, and we do our best to try to separate them out when there are options. And, and so we do attend to that and try to get them to a different placement. Again, the options are limited. To the second question, the folks that, that they tend to have the attachment with are the ones staffing the welcome homes. They do have, though, a case-carrying social worker that they're pretty connected with. So that case-carrying social worker stays with them during the transition. Many of them also have mental health providers that also support the transition because it is hard, you know, going from here to another, yet another placement.
So the welcome home is the place that they become connected to, and it's hard to place them in a family-
Exactly.
-away from their, their group.
Right, and it is not the best situation for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any other comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks to all staff who were involved, we appreciate it. It's just a note for next year, when we go through this, to kind of piggyback on Supervisor Hume's comments, if we could better align the response to the report, that would be great.
We will work on that.
It's just a-
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Nope, all right. We will, we will adjourn for lunch.
You don't want to talk, do you?
All ready? Call back to orders, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Supervisors Serna-
Here.
Frost-
Here.
Hume-
Here.
Kennedy-
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item.
Okay, so for item 40, you're acting as the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation, and I'd like the record to reflect that Directors Williams and Desmond are absent. So for item 40, approval of previous minutes, adopt fiscal year 2023-24 budget, receive and file of fiscal year 2022-23 audited financial report.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, Flo, did you call the person that's on the phone to, that's part of the-
She's, she's absent.
Oh, she is? Okay. So the-
That must be a department head, and so we'll get that muted.
Okay, all right. Thanks. I was a little confused about that, sorry.
I'm thoroughly confused. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Kennedy and board members. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and in this case, I'm also the chief fiscal officer for the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation, which is the entity that was formed to purchase the tobacco settlement rights from the county. So this is the routine annual meeting of the corporation, and there are three recommendations before you today, acting as the directors of the corporation. The first is approval of the minutes from the prior meeting, which was held on October 4th, 2022. The second is approval of the fiscal year 2023-24 recommended budget, and the third is a receive and file of the fiscal year 2022-23 audited financial report. The budgeted, the budget recommended for approval totals $106,000 for administrative costs that are consistent with the corporation's obligations associated with outstanding bonds. The audited financial report, as I mentioned, is a receive and file item, and it reflects an opinion of the corporation's auditors that the corporation's financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the corporation. Kevin Starkey from MGO, who is the corporation's auditor, is available on the line to address any questions you may have related to the audit. I'm here to answer any questions you have on the staff report, and if there are no questions, then staff's recommendation is to approve the items.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Frost.
If there are no comments, I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
Chair will second. Any comments? Any members of the public?
We do not have any comments from the public. Let me just double check one thing. Yeah, no, we don't have any public comments.
Ready to vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And again, let the record reflect that Directors Desmond and Williams are absent.
Amanda, I wish all of your presentations were that easy. Next item, please.
Okay, now you're acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is item 41, Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for the Southwatt Avenue Improvement Project. For the first property, Southwatt LLC, a California Limited Liability Company located at 7149 Southwatt Avenue, we will be asking the board to drop this property. Item two is Jaswinder Singh, a married man, as his sole and separate property as to an undivided 50% interest in Harminder Singh, a married man, and his sole and separate property as to an undivided 50% interest located at 8971 Alder Avenue. Property three is Anthony A. Akins and Tina S. Akins, trustees of the Anthony A. Akins and Tina S. Akins Family Trust, located at 8986 Elder Creek Road. We will be asking you to drop this property. For item four, Tykert Land Company, a California corporation located 5320 Southwatt Avenue. Item five, property five, Tykert Land Company, a California corporation located at Zero Jackson Road. Six is Tykert Land Company, a California corporation at 8515 Jackson Road. Property seven is Fruit Ridge Road Land Company, a California corporation, 8635 Fruit Ridge Road. Property eight, Bradshaw Self-Storage Incorporated, a California corporation, 8940 Alder Avenue. And then property nine is Tykert Land Company, California corporation, located at Zero Fruit Ridge Road. The environmental document is a final supplemental environmental impact review. And that's that.
Thank you very much, and I'm assuming you're going to be very explicit in which properties are to be dropped.
Yes, correct. So good afternoon, Vice Chair Kennedy and all members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager with the Acquisition Section on the Real Estate Division, and I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for nine Resolutions of Necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interests for the Department of Transportation's South Watt Avenue Improvement Project. As we have discussed before I begin, there has been some recent developments with two of the resolutions subject to today's hearing. And number one, South Watt LLC, a California Limited Liability Company located at 7149 South Watt Avenue, we would ask the board to drop the resolution for that. We have come to terms and received documents signed by the owner. Secondly, Resolution number three, Anthony A. Akins and Tina Akins, trustees of the Akins Family Trust. Again, we have, the county has fully executed the necessary acquisition documents for that particular property, so we can, again, as Florence has stated, drop that from the proceedings today. The purpose of the project is to modify South Watt Avenue from State Highway 16, also known as Jackson Road, at the north to Florin Road at the south, a distance which is approximately three miles. The project will widen South Avenue from two to four lanes and construct complete street improvements, including landscape medians and turn lanes, buffered bike lanes, sidewalks, curb ramps, traffic signal modifications, and pavement repair and resurfacing. The project will provide improved bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities, as well as congestion relief, enhanced safety, and aesthetic improvements with the corridor, within the corridor. Of the 74 necessary required acquisitions for the project, nine properties, again, are the subject of today's board item. So again, this time, I'd like to display the attachment to this round hearing here on the board. Each of the individual property easements are listed on this spreadsheet here. So again, item number one, we would drop South Watt LLC.
Hang on, we're having some technical
Sorry, oh.
Thank you. There we go. Thank you.
So the properties and the types and sizes of easements are all listed here, displayed here on the screen. Sizes are in square feet. So again, we are asking to drop South Watt LLC. Item number two, Jaswinder Singh and Harminder Singh, at 8971 Alder Avenue. We, the county is seeking to acquire an easement for public roadway and utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement. On to number three, the Akins parcel, which we are dropping. Number four, Tykert Land at 5320 South Watt Avenue. The easements we're looking to acquire are public roadway and public utilities easement, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement. Again, Tykert at Zero Jackson Road. Again, we are acquiring an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement. Tykert Land Company at 8515 Jackson Road, we are, the county is looking to acquire a temporary construction easement only on that property. Fruit Ridge Road Land Company, a California corporation, at 8635 Fruit Ridge Road. The county is seeking to acquire easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement. Bradshaw Self-Storage Incorporated, located at 8940 Alder Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement.
Is there, there's a second page to go on there for, there we go, thank you.
Thank you. Bradshaw Self-Storage, located at 8940, again, easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement. Last on the list, Tykert Land Company at Zero Fruit Ridge Road. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, an easement for drainage, and a temporary construction easement. The county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of the various easement interests I just mentioned, and that are displayed on Attachment three. The county's negotiations with these remaining owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure the necessary interest in the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's Resolutions of Necessity and anticipated eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the required statutory resolution of necessity findings is contained within the self, within the staff report included with the agenda packet along with an owner contact history. Notices of intention to seek approval of the resolutions of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard U.S. mail at least 15 days before today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or any of the properties in question, I or other project team members currently present are available to address those questions for you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. If there are no members of the public that are going to address the board on this matter, I would move approval of the Resolutions of Necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property for the South Watt Avenue Improvement Project, including the properties listed as number two and number four through nine on Attachment three.
Chair will second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Is there any public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, please vote.
And just for the record, I did confirm with county council that we can take one vote for all of the items. Usually, we take separate votes. Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we are right on time for item 42, 43, 44, so I'll be reading all three items into the record. So item 42 is receive update on safe stay sheltering programs and adopt the attached resolution outlining formation of and management of safe stay community councils. Item 43, I'm going to read a portion of the title. This is approval of additional funding from the American Rescue Plan Act for the Safe Stay Community at 7,101 East Parkway. And then for item 44, approve the reallocation of $5,030,744 in American Rescue Plan Act allocations from the health allocation to the housing and homeless allocation, and all of the other recommendations that are listed there in the title.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisor Kennedy, members of the board. I'm Emily Halken, the Director of your Department of Homeless Services and Housing. And as Flo just mentioned, we are calling three items together because they are incredibly interrelated. So item 42, the first one, which is on your list, is an update, general update that you've requested on our safe stay communities, where we're at in planning, designing, and funding and operations for the sites thus far we're working on. Items 43 and 44 are from the Department of General Services and contain some specific funding requests for the two safe stays that are furthest along, ones actually open. And so because these are so closely related, myself and Natasha Drain, who's the Deputy Director of Department of General Services, have combined our presentation into one, so we'll be tag teaming this a bit today. That way, we can provide you both a complete picture of what the specific actions are related to the two sites today, but also help put you, put that in the context of the bigger picture of your commitments thus far to safe stay communities. So as a reminder, during the fiscal year 2122 budget workshops, the board allocated funding to what then went to Department of Human Assistance, but now lives in the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, for two initiatives that have really helped to shape some directions the county has made since then towards addressing homelessness. The first is you allocated significant funding to increase and expand our outreach services and multidisciplinary outreach encampment teams. But second, the board allocated at that time $3.2 million of general funds to operate 200 spaces of sanctioned encampments, is how we designate them back in the budget workshops. At the time, we envisioned low barrier, non-congregate, community-based cabin communities with onsite supportive services, really building off successes that we were seeing at the time from the project room key during the pandemic. Over time, since that approval, and as we've worked with our partners, DGS and others, to develop what these sites would ultimately look like, these sanctioned encampments both have been renamed to safe stay communities, but also enhanced to include many, many more provisions and amenities that Natasha's going to talk about more in her presentation. But regardless of the physical characteristics of the sites, each site is unique and comes with its own challenges and opportunities, all of our safe stay communities are intended to be temporary, non-congregate shelters with intentionally low barrier access and entry, such that we can serve those who are most difficult to serve and who have created, who have the most challenges accessing services in traditional shelters. And but while they are low barrier, this does not mean that there are no rules or expectations. Both the site and the program itself maintain rules for the guests onsite and maintain good neighbor policies, such that they're good assets to the community at large, and we always prioritize shelter referrals to those who are known by outreach teams working in the community where that safe stay is located. To date, as you are all very familiar with, we have completed and opened the first 125 beds at the Florin and Power Inn site, and will be opening the next 56 beds at East Parkway by the end of this year. In addition to these 181 beds, which are well underway, if you add up the remainder, there's over 550 additional beds that are in design or development, as detailed in this table. In the next few weeks, we'll be back with you to bring items to your consideration around what is named here, the city partnership site one. I made this slide before the mayor and the governor announced the location of that site last week, which is on Stockton Boulevard, is part of the WellSpace Health Campus. And we are in active design for the Watt Avenue full site development that will also be in front of you early next year, but continuing to work on an interim solution as a safe parking, which should be, we should be in front of you in a couple of weeks for that as well. In total, if all of the sites listed on this slide are complete, this will add over 750 new non-congregate shelters with intensive onsite supportive services to help permanently address homelessness for hundreds of people in our community on an annual basis.
We have a quick interruption.
Please.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So as it relates to the American River Parkway site that's referenced here, and because I think we all understand that the entire Parkway is, you know, under threat by, you know, the impacts that are associated with habitation on the Parkway, it wasn't designed for that, but it has really been the lower reaches that have historically seen the greatest impact. Those lower reaches run through the city of Sacramento. So is it possible or probable that we would consider a city partnership site three that could serve the purposes of bringing folks off the Parkway? And, you know, we do have 30 million that's really set aside for that. Is there, is there any thought about how that will be accounted for, I guess is what I'm asking? Because we've always, internal to the county, said, well, we're interested in a Parkway site, but it's likely that's probably going to be located within the city.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. I don't, I don't think these necessarily have to be mutually exclusive. They're shown here mutually exclusive. We currently have an RFQ, a request for qualifications, open right now, seeking partnerships within a couple of miles of the Parkway. Many of those sites, as you say, will be within the city of Sacramento, and so I don't think that there's, I think there's an openness to talk about that with the city.
Okay, thank you.
And the third one down, the city partnership site one, that's the Stockton Boulevard one that has been announced. Just to be clear, that is in the city of Sacramento, not in the county, not in an incorporated area. However, because of our relationship with the city and our partnership agreement, which is legally binding, we will be offering those services and we will be operating that site, regardless of whether it's in the city or unincorporated area, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the county, because of the partnership agreement, which we, you know, agreed to do just that, but we did not select that site, but it was the, I don't know, we weren't calling it turnkey, what were we calling it?
Shovel-ready site.
There we go, shovel-ready site, thank you. So that, that's the shovel-ready site that is mentioned in the partnership agreement, but it was the city of Sacramento's selection of that site?
That is correct. And similarly, city partnership site two actually is hypothetical, it doesn't exist. We would be looking for the city to identify a shovel-ready site appropriate to accommodate the balance of our obligation. To Supervisor Serna's point, it could be, it could be a site that also serves the American River Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Natasha, who's going to go through some details on Florin and East Parkway, and then I'll rejoin you to talk about some of the funding for future sites.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Kennedy and members of the board, Natasha Drain, Deputy Director, Department of General Services. With the next several slides, I'll discuss the Florin and East Parkway project cost and our ask for additional ARPA funding. The Florin and Power Inn total project one-time capital construction costs are just over $10 million, inclusive of the cabin purchase of just over $1 million, the hard construction costs in the amount of $6.9 million, which includes the contractor costs to construct the site improvements, for example, utility trenching, cabin anchoring, and additional site lighting. We delivered this project through competitively bid contracts via the Job Order Contracting Program, and these construction costs reflect market rates for construction in this area. We also include in the total cost of the project, soft costs of just over $2 million, which includes staff time and consultant time for design and project management, as well as construction inspection and permitting staff time. For a small, complex project like this, the soft costs are within the range of what we would expect.
Hang on, Natasha. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So the site is being leased, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the, so far, out of all that's accounted for here, you have almost $7 million for construction. I assume that includes the more recent need to plum the site and
Correct.
energize the site.
Correct, and we'll talk about all of that in Right, so I guess what I'm, where I'm going with
this is that those are, I would consider those sunk costs. You're not going to pick up and leave with the plumbing and the, you know, the wiring. So do we have anything in a modified lease agreement that stipulates that we've actually added value to the property by way of some of those improvements that are needed for this particular use now?
So my understanding is when we went to get the lease with the property owner, at the time, we didn't plan to do all that infrastructure improvement. We have not since, as my understanding, amended that lease to do as you've suggested.
I would suggest that we sit down with, or have the right people from the county sit down with the property owner and, you know, make a little bit more detailed presentation than what I've just kind of alluded to, but I do think that, you know, the county has, per this spreadsheet, has done quite a bit to actually add value to the property. And I know this is temporary, but it's going to be there for a while. I mean, this issue's not going to go away anytime soon, there's going to be a need for it. But, you know, I would say that, you know, those improvements to bring water and wastewater and electricity to the site at least, are going to remain with that site for a longer period of time and should be part of the value calculation.
Very good.
Thank you.
I would, I would go further to say that when those conversations take place, I'm going to use my vast powers as vice chair to ask that you include the supervisors from District one and District two on those conversations.
Very good.
Thank you.
The annual site and program operations are at 4.28 million, inclusive of the annual lease costs, site operational cost, and program operational cost. Just want to make a distinction here between site operations and program operations. Site operations include facility maintenance and operations for the cabins and other onsite facilities, the utilities, and propane, among other costs. And program operations are the city net contracted costs provide program services to guests. This slide summarizes the additional requested ARPA of about 4.9 million, 3.6 of which is requested for DGS to, for the construction and soft costs, as well as additional costs related to the shelters, and 1.2 million for DHSH for trailer rentals and utilities. In June of 2022, the board approved moving the Florin project forward In June of 2022, the board approved moving the Florin project forward and allocated ARPA dollars to the project. This slide summarizes the action taken by the board in June of 2022, which is the column on the left. And at that time, DGS and DHSH estimated needed funding based on a very simple site that I'll speak more to in the next couple of slides. And the column on the right outlines the additional requested ARPA for the completed project. I will note that there are substantial increases in several cost categories, which reflects the significant changes in the scope of this project, which required major infrastructure improvements, including bringing water, sewer, and electrical to onsite facilities, as you mentioned, Supervisor Serna. Here, the project's scope changes are summarized that resulted in an increased cost of the project. The original scope of the project was simply planned with 100 cabins, porta-potties, and shower units, and a, that were self-contained, and a couple of single-wide office trailers. Once the county's operational partner was identified and came on board, we began to learn from their experience operating similar sites in Southern California. And through our shared learning, we immediately realized that we needed to go back to the drawing board on the design to think about how the site could be delivered in a way that dignified guests and optimized operations. The new design planned for plum toilets, showers, and laundry facilities, which required major construction to trench these utilities to the onsite facilities. And the Florin site infrastructure was also dated and in disrepair, which required the replacement of fire hydrants and a water main as well, some water main repairs. We also added an ADA path of travel, a fire lane, additional site lighting, and a triple-wide office trailer that could serve as administrative space, as well as a community gathering space for meals. For the dog park, we are currently in permitting for improvements, including ADA accessibility improvements, such as a path of travel. We'll also be doing some site grading in the dog park, as well as adding ground cover and a water fountain. The, the next several slides summarize the costs for East Parkway. We're estimating 5.5 million in capital construction cost and 2.6 million in site and program operations. I will note that this project is not yet complete, as you well know, but these, so these costs are estimated based on our experience with the Florin project. We are currently estimating construction completion on the project in November, and we're targeting December to open the facility to guests. We'll keep the board and community apprised of any schedule changes that would delay these plans. DGS is requesting an additional 2.5 million, and DHS is requesting an additional 680,000, a total ARPA request of 3.2. And this is a summary of the board-approved ARPA allocation from July of 2022, and of course, what we're asking for of you today. And again, I just want to note that the right column costs are estimated and actual costs will not be realized, and of course, until the project is completed. And I think we've done a pretty good job estimating these costs based on our experience with Florin, but should we need to come back for additional costs, we will do that. And then finally, I want to bring the conversation sort of back up to this 10,000-foot level and want to emphasize that, that costs can vary for construction, program operations, and facility operations and maintenance, depending on several factors, a few of which are outlined here. I won't go into length about this, but the point here is that variations in the site, whether it's owned or leased, or whether it's developed or undeveloped, as well as design options and program variations, all have an impact on project cost. The next several slides, I'll hand back to Emily, and then I'll see you in just a couple of minutes.
Natasha, before you go, going back to the, you know, Power Inn and Florin site, I would be remiss if I didn't pass on the thoughts of Fergus, the most famous Chihuahua in Sacramento, in that, you know, the, we say we're low barrier and we allow pets, but we really are not accommodating for them at all, quite frankly. We just allow them. And, I mean, and the area that we set aside probably was too big, by the way, but that's another, that's a nitpicky thing. But before we start spending county money on that, I think there's an opportunity to raise funds from the, the business community to do that. So I would ask that we, you know, take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Natasha. Get back to where, sorry, we had some, it's okay. So considering the detailed information that Natasha shared on the cost, the development for Florin and East Parkway, I now want to revisit the approved and planned sites that we talked about the very front in this presentation, and to share with the board some preliminary estimates on what we think ongoing funding needs might look like in the coming years. So the following slides contain cost estimates for both this fiscal year and the upcoming three fiscal years for the ongoing site operations and program operations. It does not include any capital costs. At this point, we've accounted for Florin and East Parkway, and the majority of the other sites that we have on our list, we anticipate having capital costs either covered by the state or from another one-time source that has been taken out of this model. And while this exercise is certainly informed by all of our best knowledge and experience, what we've learned from Florin and East Parkway, it is a model only, and there's lots of things that could impact this, new funding can come aboard, delays on delivery of products, et cetera. As the future sites come to the board for ultimate consideration and approval, we will be bringing more precise and detailed funding estimates. I also want to just note that this model assumes construction and, construction and funding timelines, which for many of these sites are outside of the county's control, especially as we enter a space of working with the city and the state. And so while we've done our best to reflect our experiences from Florin, and we've used the best information that we have from our state and city partners, those things certainly can and probably will change as, as we move forward. So what I have done is split up the modeling so that you can, it's not itty-bitty print, and you can see it on the screen from our tool, to show one to two sites per PowerPoint slides. The first I'm showing here are Florin and the East Parkway sites. And for each of these, in the far left is the name of the site. The next column over gives a total bed count of that site. And when applicable, in parentheses below, there will be a number of units that we envision to be funded through the Behavioral Health Bridge funding. This is a subset of total units, not additive. So at Florin, there's 125 total beds, 20 will be funded and reserved for behavioral health clients through Behavioral Health Bridge funding. It's important to note with these two in particular is that we acknowledge the board has only approved two years of operations. So my showing the additional years here is for modeling purposes only. Any actual continuation of these sites beyond the initial two years would require additional board approval. Again, here, we are showing just the ongoing operational and program costs. You can see that for these two sites, we're fully funded this year and next year, and we run into a small deficit, mostly, not mostly, completely related to site operations, when the ARPA funding that we're asking for your commitment for today is fully expended after two years. However, you can see the program operations, this is the services, security, food, all the things for the guests, are fully funded through our ongoing HAP funds, as well as the general fund that I referred to that was allocated into then DHA, but now DHSH's base-year budget. The second group of sites are the Watt Safe Parking and the Watt Full Site. And while these are shown as two distinct projects in this model, in reality, the Safe Parking, I would really describe more akin to Phase One of the full-site build-out. As you know, we did receive a few weeks ago, a commitment of a grant funding from the state for encampment resolution funding, that's what ERF stands for, I apologize for acronyms, for two years of operations of the Safe Parking Program. And in a couple of weeks, Supervisor Desmond will be recommending commitment of funding from some of his district allocation ARPA funds for construction associated with the Safe Parking component. And so while this funding model seems to show a funding gap starting in fiscal year 25, 26 for the Parking Program, by that time, we anticipate that the Full Site will be up and running, and the operations of Safe Parking will just be folded into the larger site. So for modeling purposes, it appears to be a gap, but it will be folded into the larger program. We are underway on design for the larger site, and we'll be bringing those concepts to the board for consideration in early 2024. But you can see that outside of the Behavioral Health Bridge funding, we will need to be identifying additional ongoing operational funding for this site once it becomes fully built out. The third site is our planned site for the American River Parkway. And again, for modeling purposes, I've shown it as one site. It could very easily be two smaller sites, one large site, one small site. We're waiting to see what comes from the RFQ, which I noted is currently actively out, and we anticipate getting responses back by mid-November. For purposes of modeling, I sized it at around the size of Florin, 150 beds, a little bit larger, and used some of the assumptions we've learned from Florin to, to cost out this model. Thanks to the state and as well the Board of Supervisors, we have $30 million set aside to support both the capital costs for this project, as well as the first few years of operations. And you can see that based on these assumptions, we do anticipate having sufficient funding for the operations, if it turns out to be a site of 150, through fiscal year 26 and 27, and actually, probably a year beyond that. Finally, the last two sites are the ones that are perhaps the most conceptual, as much of the work that's going to take to realize these sites is lying outside of the county. As Supervisor Kennedy pointed out, City Partnership Site One, which we now know as the Stockton Site, is being designed and built by the state of California as part of the governor's commitment to bring 350 tiny home beds into Sacramento. So currently, what we know from the State Department of General Services is they're designing the site to accommodate between 150 and 175 beds. The latest iteration we've seen of their site plan contains 175 beds, which is why the model shows it at 175. As with Watt, again, we received state encampment resolution grant funds to support the operations through the end of fiscal year 25 and 26. And again, we anticipate overlaying Behavioral Health Bridge funding to support those clients with higher needs at this site. City Partnership Site Two, as I said, the front end is hypothetical. This is really based on the commitment that we have in our partnership agreement, that if the city provides shovel-ready sites, the county will build and operate 200 beds in the city of Sacramento. And so assuming that Stockton holds 175, that leaves us with a balance of about 25 beds, and so we just created a proportionally modeled-out 25-bed site. I do want to be clear at this point, the city has not identified land for these beds. When we roll all of these last four slides up, the bottom line suggests that if all of these sites are brought online in the timing that we've assumed, and they remain continually open, nothing closes, or shrinks, or grows, that ongoing program and site operations beyond what's already funded within the DHSH budget is approximately 10 to 14 million annually. I do want to underscore, I've said this before, that this assumes no additional new funding from outside the county, from state, or from federal, from private resources. But there are some funding considerations that they're currently known or expected that we think will be able to help address this gap, at least in the early years. First of all, the Department of Homeless Services and Housing has about 6.5 million of unspent funding from the early, the first three years of HAP from the state. This can definitely be used to offset costs in the early years, so '24, '25, and portions of '25, '26, but that is one-time funding and will be gone once that, once we fully spend that. And while HAP is technically one-time funding that we get every single year from the state, and the state seems to change rules, it does seem to be that they are continually committing to this funding source. So we believe it's likely safe to assume that the state's commitments to localities, at least in the near future through HAP, will remain at least at the current scale and frequency. Assuming that, we're looking at about $5 million of annual HAP funding that could offset this unfunded estimate that you see on the slide. And finally, the Behavioral Health Bridge funding is a pilot fund, and it's currently set to sunset at the end of fiscal year 26, 27. So if we had drawn this out even a year or two later, you would start seeing those gaps increase because the Behavioral Health Bridge funding is currently set to expire at that point. However, there's a lot of movement happening, as you are well aware, in the MHSA funding discussions at the state, there's lots of discussions around CalAim, and there may be some future opportunities to work in partnership with our friends at Department of Health Services, and to continue to support these beds even after the Behavioral Health Bridge funding goes away.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Emily, I just want to clarify the funding considerations. So the one-time 6.7 million and the potentially annual 5 million, that is not factored in these numbers that you're showing here as far as an unfunded estimate?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So finally, I'd like to close by circling back to the why behind our investments. We sort of started talking about why the board made this decision to pivot to now what we call Safe Stay Communities, and a very intentional decision by this board to try to think about sheltering housing and services very differently. We are only a month and a half into Florin, and we are starting to see some really great impacts, I believe, of this investment, this choice already. I had staff look at some data, this is just the first 45 clients, we have more people there today who came into Florin, and you can see
Emily, as somebody who's, who has stayed at this site, I don't like that first statistic.
This was taken before you stayed there.
Thank you.
This data was taken before you stayed there. But you can see here, we do have some, the level of vulnerabilities and, and that we are seeing of the people who are coming inside, and that our ability to serve them in a model like this is that much more than you might see in a more traditional shelter. Both the physical design and the program design really are aligned to meet the needs of the complex, of the complex vulnerabilities that we're seeing in the population. And just to share with you, and Supervisor Kennedy may have more, some of our first guests that we've seen have really epitomized the values that the board has made, I think, to making lasting changes. Just three that were lifted up to me, and I've not had the pleasure to meet them personally, but some of my staff have, is that one of our first guests that came in was a woman who came in with addictions to methamphetamines. And with having the safety and security of a, of a place to stay, as well as the support of the staff, she is now approached and is entering detox and some treatments. That's great. We also had a couple who entered, a male, female couple, they were escaping violence and stalking, and because their household makeup was two different genders and they had a violent background, they really weren't able to be safely sheltered at any other shelter in our community. So this provided an opportunity for them to stay sheltered as a couple, and then to find secure housing together.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Just in terms of the, any future updates, if I could, I'd like to suggest that we have another seventh bullet point added, which would be percentage of guests that come from, I don't know, yeah, two and a half miles, two miles, five miles.
Sure. I can tell you 100% of the people there now are, but I hear you, as we start expanding our reach beyond, we want to make sure we track them.
That was, as you recall, one of the principal commitments we made to the community, so I think we need to be honest with ourselves, and if you're telling me today it's 100%, that's fantastic. We should take, you know, we should make, make that note.
Yeah, so right now, entry is managed by the county, so we're very able to manage that. As we move this program into coordinated access, we remain committed, and we've had many conversations, that priority will still remain, so we'll definitely be tracking that.
Thank you.
So while the initial outcomes from Florin are very promising, and we're excited to be opening East Parkway soon, we have much more to do to realize the board's commitment. So a few next steps that are coming, and then I'm going to have Natasha finish up on today's actions. As I said, our RFQ for the American River Parkway site is live on the street. We anticipate having responses mid-November. We'll also be back to you in early November for your consideration of both Watt Safe Parking and our City Partnership Site located at Stockton WellSpace Campus. And we plan to bring some initial design considerations and programming for the full Watt program, full Watt site in early next year. And of course, we're going to continue to work with our city partners to identify additional partnership sites. I'll definitely lift up to them potential to overlay with our, our Parkway work, and continue to seek additional funding from state and other partners. With that, I'm going to turn it to Natasha to just close out with the recommendations for today.
Thank you, Emily.
There's a lot here, but this slide summarizes the recommendations from both DGS and DHSH. And I would just say that maybe in summary, this reflects the additional, these recommendations, that is, reflects the additional ARPA requested and the contract approvals with the county's operator. So that's this slide and this slide. And finally, should the board adopt staff's recommendations today, the total ARPA investment in the ARPA housing and homeless allocation is 108.7 million. We'll be back before the board on November 7 to discuss additional investments for the Watt Safe Parking project. And with that, we'd be happy to address any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, I'm seeing no one punched in at this point. Natasha, I would like to ask, all due respect Natasha, I would like to ask, all due respect to our hard-working, you know, county employees who care about this issue, it took 14 months to set up the first one. That seems like a lot of time. In your opinion, in your estimation, and I understand that, you know, you've been put into this position unexpectedly in some ways, would you say that, you know, it's not going to take 14 months to put up a tiny homes project in the future?
I want to be able to tell you yes, but what I will say is it's complicated, it depends on the type of site-
Understood.
And so I can't say with certainty that we can deliver sooner than that, but what we are doing is evaluating this project, how we delivered it, and ways that we can improve in the future. I can guarantee you, we are evaluating that.
Thank you very much, thank you. Any other questions, comments, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just before we move to a motion and look to codify this action, I just want to say, ARPA is a blessing and a curse in that it was manna from heaven, but it's one-time monies that, you know, you see these figures in these commas, and it just doesn't almost seem real. And so there are considerable sunk costs, as was phrased, into standing up these two sites, that obviously we want to make sure that we carry them through their useful life and don't abandon and change course and lose that investment. But I just want to reiterate again the idea that these were intended to be temporary sites, and that hopefully we are making progress against reducing the need for said sites. And then the other piece of it is just that when you look at the operational cost, which is the ongoing expense, once ARPA dries up and goes away, you know, from the estimates that I saw in the briefing and on these slides, you know, you're talking $35,000 to $50,000 per individual annually. We have constituents that don't earn that much every year, and so this is real money, and it is a real cost, and so I would just hope that our contractor takes that seriously, and they take their task and their charge seriously, and that we do get these people the help that they need so that we can decommission these sites at some point. With that, Chair, I would be willing to move the item to move the ARPA funds over.
Chair will second. I also want to say that, you know, it's known that I did have an opportunity to spend some time out for, out of this, the first site, and I will tell you that from my personal perspective, that we're going in the right direction. It was a phenomenal experience. I was sitting out one evening, and three women came up to me and sat down and introduced themselves to me, and the first words out of their mouths were, "This place saved my life." How do you put a price tag on that? I don't think you do. But also, the, I went through the full intake procedure, I said, you know, "Don't treat me differently than anybody else who shows up." And, you know, I mean, I had to agree to 69 rules and sign off, and then there's the program that they have to go through, and every 30 days it's evaluated. If they don't, they get put on a improvement plan. If they don't do that eventually, and they're not participating in their improvement in their own lives, then they'll be asked to leave. This is, I think, in the nine years that I've been here, the most significant thing that I've had a part of, in that we are changing not just the community around it, because I did drive the area beforehand and counted one homeless person within two and a half miles, one homeless person. Now, my office used to get calls on that corner for fires, homeless encampments, and it's working, it is changing people's lives. And, you know, is it expensive? Yes, it is. But with the improvements that we're making on the neighborhoods surrounding it, and the businesses surrounding it, and most importantly, the lives that we're, you know, impacting, I think that, you know, my, you know, it hasn't been completely smooth, and I've had my conversations with staff in the last year where I think it could have gone better, but we learn from our mistakes, we learn from our achievements. And I think that, you know, kudos to my colleagues for hanging in there and, you know, seeing that this program goes forward, because I really do believe that this is the single most impactful thing that we've done on the homeless situation. And as we grow it, and we continue to grow it, I just, I'm proud to be a county supervisor. Please vote.
Mr. Serna.
Sorry.
So Emily, one thing I didn't hear you mention was, and I don't know that there's any statistics necessarily, but how are we doing with the communication with the Catholic Church across the street and with, you know, old Ford and Towns, you know, folks in terms of demonstrating to them the merits of this?
I will start by interrupting Emily respectfully. We did set up the Community Advisory Council, which we're going to talk about more, and they have been a participant throughout the whole process, they've had two members that have been participating in the meetings, and, but as far as, I welcome Emily's comments on what we've done to communicate the successes or the status.
I would agree with that, and actually, one of the actions that I think we didn't mention, but what is in the packet, is approving, my office making guidelines so that we can have a little more structure on those community councils for not just this one, but future ones. In terms of the Vietnamese church, I certainly wouldn't want to speak for them, but as Supervisor Kennedy said, they've been at every meeting. I have heard some of them share with us their, the lowering of their frustration with this, and their appreciation for being a part of this group. We continue to meet about every six weeks, and they have numbers for my staff, they have numbers for the staff at CityNet. I think silence means that they're probably doing okay, or else we'd be hearing a lot more from them. Same with the Florin Society, they've had two members on it. I think that, you know, the church has been a little bit more active with my staff, bringing to them questions, concerns, and also lifting up that they're sort of seeing, seeing the vision finally. I think we still have some ways to go, but I think they're, and we're open to any additional work that we need to do with them.
Okay, and then the Old Town Florin folks?
They are also a part of, they have two or three members on the council, you know, they continue to, very active participation, they are at every single meeting that we have. I wouldn't say that I've heard from them the same sentiments, but as I said, they have not backed down, they continue to participate, and they're invited to every conversation.
Okay. Well, I think it would be good, again, in the future, if nothing else, maybe even just to let those individual members of the advisory committee know that you're going to be giving an update to the board, that could be, or should be, an opportunity for them to augment whatever staff presentation with whatever they'd like to provide orally here or in writing in advance of the meeting. But I think that that should be kind of a regular part of any future update.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please vote.
unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item.
All right. Sorry. Get in there. All right, for item 45, this is a contract for design and construction support services for Rio Casumnas Correctional Center, construct control rooms and main jail recreation and yard improvements.
Good afternoon, Natasha Drain, Deputy Director, Department of General Services. In March of 2023, DGS advertised for architectural and engineering consulting firms to provide design and engineering services for the RCCC Control Rooms Project and the Main Jail Yard Split Project. The RCCC Control Room Project will construct two new control rooms in existing Barracks C and D and Barracks G and H. This project will increase from minimum to medium security, RCCC allowing, rather, the Sheriff's Office to house medium-security inmates at RCCC, thereby providing the Sheriff's Office a way to assist with reducing overcrowding at the main jail. The Main Jail Yard Split Project will modify existing outdoor recreation yard areas from three to six areas to provide greater flexibility for out-of-cell time. Neither project will increase capacity at the main jail or RCCC. Nochtan Lewis and Arrington Watkins Architects submitted statements of qualifications, and both firms were asked to provide or submit proposals. In June of 2023, proposals were reviewed, and Nochtan Lewis ranked highest. Staff recommends approval of the selection of Nochtan Lewis Architects provide architectural design and engineering services for these two projects. If approved, the county will enter into an agreement with N.L.A. to provide these services. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, any questions at the board? Seeing none, are there any public comment?
We do, we have three public comments.
Proceed.
Okay. Giselle? Giselle? No, okay.
Welcome.
Hello, give me a second. I did request for four minutes, Chair, if you would be willing to extend-
You get two.
I get two, okay. I have a two-minute version as well, it's just not as good. All right.
That was smart.
I am the author of that rather dense presentation around the analysis of-
And not take your time away. Thank you very much for that, we did make sure that was part of the record, and we also made sure that all of the board members got it, well thought out, and so I appreciate the time that you put into that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, you guys got a chance to look at it and digest it, because I know it is dense. Yeah, so as you saw in that packet, there are some, there's evidence basically that the county, due to some of the individuals or specific groups that we've contracted with, we may be overspending on some areas in terms of May's compliance. So as I look through this contract that we're considering today, there are three primary parts. The first of these is additions to RCCC staff rooms. It states in the letter that these improvements would work towards substantial compliance with the May's Consent Decree remedial plan, but I can assure you, as someone who has looked at and classified all 386 demands of the May's Consent Decree, RCCC staff room improvements, which from the RFC, quote, "Provide a comfortable work environment for the officers," I assure you, that is not a demand in the May's Consent Decree. Part number two, however, splitting the recreational rooms in the main jail, this actually is quite likely required according to the demand section eight and subitem B1A around out-of-cell time, demanding 17 hours of out-of-cell time per week. This is in combination with SMI population segregation, almost certainly we would need to split the recreational yards, so I would look, I would say, it would be my recommendation to yes on this part. On the third part, which is the third floor 300 West Acute Psychiatric Unit Construction, court-appointed expert monitoring reports around mental health have said that, and I'm paraphrasing a little bit here, but compliance is very unlikely when looking at this level of SMI acute, to be handled with May's Consent compliance within jail facility. It is more likely, according to that expert testimony, that if we went to an out-of-jail facility such as hospitals, we would be able to staff appropriately, which we are having very much difficulty doing right now. We would also have better conditions around medical record-keeping, which we are slightly failing to do right now in the court, or sorry, in the jail. And so it is my recommendation to the board that the county only approve section number two of this project, which will likely save us around $700,000, and as we just talked about, would be enough services for around 20 people at that facility you stayed at, Vice Chair, for a year. So budgeting is important, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, would you please trade information with him as far as contact information? I think that we have an opportunity to learn from some of our constituents here.
Yes, Vice Chair, we have met, and so we'll, I'll reach out again.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Next, Mr. Copeland.
Okay, I'd like to know how it would benefit inmates at RCCC and the Main County Jail? And this is not part of the jail expansion, is it? Because it's nothing, I hear it says a jail expansion, which I think should be, go to the voters before you decide a jail expansion. I mean, you put the cart before the horse, as they say. The county board does not know what the heck they're doing. There's not enough input from the public on anything. You're blowing it on a lot of issues, including this one. How would this benefit the inmates, is what I'm asking? Will they get more free jail, free time to go like study or on the computer with this? I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any others?
That concludes your public comments.
Sir, Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So the last speaker brought up a couple of issues. I heard a reference to expansion, so who wants to address whether or not this constitutes, quote-unquote, "expansion"?
Mr. Jones, address that.
So Supervisor, for clarification, the items before you today do not include that, these are separate projects, they're considered interim projects that have nothing to do with the new intake health facility or other expansion.
Okay, so it doesn't add capacity, not a single square foot for another bed?
Correct, these projects do not.
Okay, I'm just trying to be very thorough-
Yes.
-based on what we just heard from Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
The second issue that he brought up is, how will this affect the inmates? So who wants, do you want to take the question?
I'll go ahead and stay on if that's okay. Yes, so both projects are for the purpose of increasing services and care for inmates, for example, the additional out-of-cell time, as well as more flexibility at RCCC to be less crowded at main jail.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Serna.
Any public comment other than that? All right then, is there a motion? Chair will move to approve. Please vote.
unanimous vote with those members present. Okay, for item 46, this is your own rank's appointments to the California State Association of Counties Board of Directors and Urban Counties Caucus. Chair Desmond's term expires on November 1st, and alternate Chairmember Frost, she also expires, so we need to either reappoint or appoint new.
Well, I hate to see Chair Frost, I mean, Member Frost expire. But I will move to maintain as-is.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Okay, unanimous vote with those members present, and then let's take your nominations. You are continuing to October 24th Cemetery Advisory Commission and the Community Review Commission continuing to November 7th, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Casumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Human Services Coordinating Council, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, continuing to December 5th Assessment Appeals Board, Elk Grove Casumnas Cemetery District, Galt Arno Cemetery District, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Rio Linda Elverta Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento Environmental Commission, Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your matters today, we have Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council. Clerk has a note to continue this to November 7th, Area for Agency on Aging Advisory Council. Clerk has a note from the Chiefs to appoint Ann Zonderman. Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, clerk has a note to continue to December 5th. Natoma's Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to November 7th.
Thank you. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, clerk has a note to appoint Crystal Harding Jenkins and Nancy Manley, and then I'll ask Supervisor Frost. Please continue to November 7th. Thank you. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, clerk has a note to appoint Elizabeth Hopper. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue to October 24th, please.
Got it. And Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Serna?
I'd like to nominate Marissa Vaughn. And continue the remainder to December 5th.
Thank you. And then Supervisor Frost? Continue to December 5th, please. Thank you. Okay. Sylvan Cemetery District. Supervisor Frost? Please continue to October 24th. Thank you. That concludes your nominations. Next.
Next item, please.
County executive comments?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Means a lot.
It'll bode well in your interview. Any other, any board members? No? Okay. Well, it's 3:09, and I just want to say, if he's watching, Supervisor Desmond, Chair of the Board, suck it.